As Chair of this committee, I must remind all members of their duty under the State Government Ethics Act to avoid conflicts of interest and appearances of conflict of interest. If you know of any conflict or appearance of conflict with respect to any matter coming before the committee today, please identify it at this time. I'll ask Chris McClure to please call.
Chair Patel. Vice Chair Turner. Mr. Cottis. Ms. Lloyd. Mr. Pryor.
Here.
Mr. Chairman, you have a call.
Thank you. Our first item of business is to review and approve the open session minutes from the November 6th, 2024 meeting. Do I hear a motion to approve the open session minutes of the November 6th, 2024 meeting? Second. Any discussion or debate? Hearing none. The minutes are approved. The items below were placed on the consent agenda for approval by the full board tomorrow. The next item on our agenda is to hear an update on the Office of Internal Audit Fiscal 2025 Work Plan. Chief Audit Officer Dean Weber is here to present this item. Mr. Weber.
Good afternoon, Chairman Patel, committee members, board members, chancellor, guests. Thank you for braving the weather to come out here today. I wasn't sure what kind of crowd we'd have, but it's pretty good turnout, so thank you for that. I'm gonna try and advance this one. There we go. Thank you. I bring before you today an update on the Office of Internal Audit activities occurring through the end of the second quarter of fiscal year 2025. This marks the halfway point of our work plan year and provides us an opportune time to kind of come back and have a check in to see where we're at, what we've completed, what we have yet to accomplish before the end of the fiscal year. Each year, the board approves an internal audit work plan, and that's the roadmap for the work that our office carries out over the course of the year. Shown here on this pie chart is a percentage composition of the work plan that encompassed the 25 planned engagements, 69% showed there in green. Carryover engagements, there were six, coming in at 17% of the current plan. And there were five special projects that arose during the course of the year in the first, in the first two quarters, representing 14% of the work plan year. The 25 planned engagements that make up the plan, as you know, you're familiar with, they're identified through the annual risk assessment process, determining where internal audit resources should most appropriately be focused during the, during our work for the year. Special projects are those that come up during, from investigations, special requests, or inquiries. Getting a little feedback there, sorry for that. I don't know. I know it's one of those things you just shake your head. It's like, oh, no. I appreciate that. So moving forward to this chart, the chart shown here summarizes the Office of Internal Audit's achievements that we've concluded. So the things that we've accomplished through the first half of the year. The first column details the total number of engagements populating each of the categories of internal audit work. It totals up there to 36 engagements on record at, at the midpoint of the year. At this milestone, we've concluded seven planned audits, six are underway. And additionally, four carryover audits have been completed. One of the two carryover special projects has also been completed. So in total, that brings us to 14 engagements that have concluded, nine are underway, and 13 have yet to be initiated. This places our percentage of overall efforts at 64% at our halfway point. And based on this, I believe, you know, we're currently in a good position and on track to accomplish the majority of our work planned for the year. Shown here is a status summary of the 17 work plan engagements that have been completed or underway. They're just for your information, you've all received full copies of these reports. The 11 completed engagements are identified along with the date the report was issued. Additionally, the six projects underway are detailed along with the status of each of those projects, where we are. Just want to note that this is a fluid, this was at December 31st, and some of these statuses have, have since advanced to the next level of the engagement step. Likewise, this slide highlights the one carryover and two current year special project engagements that have been completed. Additionally, one special project and two investigatory reviews are currently underway. They're highlighted here on this slide as well. A component of internal audit activity encompasses follow-up to ensure corrective actions on prior audit report recommendations are implemented as they're proposed. This slide provides a status update on the follow-up activity at the end of the second quarter. And it's highlighting where we're at with 18 new recommendations were provided for reports that were generated in fiscal year 25. We've closed out 16 prior audit findings and leaves us at 45 at the current time. And of those, 23 are not yet ready for assessment. And what that means is when management provides a corrective action plan, they define a date for when they anticipate to have that work completed. And that had not yet occurred. 22 are ready for review now at the end of the second quarter. So a few other items of interest here, stepping back from the plan. The work plan itself, the outlook is positive. We're slightly ahead of where we were last year in comparison to the number of engagements completed and underway. The number of special projects and investigations really mirror where we were last year at this time. And at this juncture, our focus remains on completing the planned risk-based audits. And we present no changes recommended to the plan. Focusing on professional development, the IA standards mandate that the internal audit professionals need to complete 40 continuing professional hours each year. That aligns with the standards, and we budget time in our work plan to accomplish that. This report's on a calendar year, so at the end of December, all staff members have attained that necessary training. I'm also happy to share that one staff member obtained her CPA licensure, and three team members are actively pursuing the Certified Internal Auditor exam, that's a four-part exam. And two of those individuals have passed three of the four parts. So we really have a strong staff supporting the audit efforts here at Carolina. The Audit Committee Charter requires the committee to be updated also on the outcomes of the Annual Comprehensive Financial Report. The North Carolina State Auditor issued a clean and unqualified opinion. A complete update will be provided to you by Vice Chancellor. Neufman is part of the Finance Committee meeting, so please look forward to those comments. The last two items here in January is when the university begins activities identifying the university's top five ERM risks that we'll be reporting to the System Office in early June. It's kind of a several-step process here. Really, it begins, we're at the first phase now where we're evaluating the risk landscape of higher education. We're developing a collective list of the university's overall high-risk concerns as perceived from management. We then move to survey the broader leadership team to rank risk event probability and occurrence for those identified high risks. We then socialize that outcome of the survey with executive leadership, and then ultimately determine the top five risks for the university that will report up to the System Office. Also at this time, it's where we're beginning to plan our work plan for fiscal year 26. We'll bring that to the committee in May for your approval. And just a few of the steps in this exercise, it's really determining the university's audit universe. So that's the scope of all activities comprising the university that internal audit needs to consider when they're looking where work can be completed. We also discuss areas of audit interest with senior leadership, obtain feedback on those areas that they think audit should be involved in. And again, looking at the higher education landscape, evaluating the strategic plan and the financial activities of the past year at the university. All that to say, then, we come up with our list of 25, roughly 25 risk-based internal audits projects for the next year. So that's a summary of where we are at this juncture. Happy to address any questions if you have any.
Any questions, Mr. Weber?
Sure.
All right, thank you. Just two. One is, so it says we have 45 recommendations to verify the management response.
Correct.
And there's 23 that are open. Do you have like a chart of that, or which ones?
Yeah, we maintained it.
And where they are? Is that something that can we share with us?
Yes, certainly. I could provide that to you. It is a, we maintain a log of, you know, from each time they're put in there. It's a running total of the charts as we close them out, so we certainly can provide you with a list of those that are open.
Yeah, I think that would be great. It'd be interesting to see. And then finally, it seems like we have carryover every year, which I understand.
Yep.
Is there a reason that we shoot for 25 each year, knowing there are carryover?
Yes, certainly. Good question. Well, those engagements, it's kind of hard to judge based on the number of special projects that arise during the course of the year. So we want to have in our work plan enough to ensure that we will get them, you know, if we have time, we'll have audits to complete. We prioritize the list of audits on our work plan, trying to get to the most important ones first. And then the carryover engagements, obviously not completed, but roll forward. I think this year will be a good example because I really anticipate that hopefully there will be minimal, if any, carryover engagements based on the position of where we are right now with our work plan. So this would be one of those years, first since I've been here, if it occurs that we've actually will have everything completed, you know, very close to that June 30th deadline, but that's kind of the rationale behind it.
Anybody else? Thank you, Mr. Weber.
Thank you.
Our final informational item is an update from Vice Chancellor Barker on information security. Dr. Barker will give an initial presentation to this committee in open session. If you have specific questions about any of the matters covered by his presentation, please let him know, and we can convene in closed session to discuss them if necessary. Dr. Barker?
Thank you. Good afternoon. I hope everybody had a restful and restorative time over the winter break. For those of you who don't know me, I mean, thank you for the introduction. I'm Mike Barker. And with me is Paul Rivers. He'll be doing the bulk of the update. Paul is the Assistant Vice Chancellor and Chief Information Security Officer. Although our update today fulfills an annual requirement established by the, by the System Office, our aim, as always, is more than just checkbox. Our aim is to provide a substantive update on the status and direction of the information security program, the emphases, and how we approach safeguarding information across the institution and into entities that are affiliated with the institution, both in purpose and also third parties as well. So while the weather's cold, the information security landscape is not. We have been busy, and we have a significant and exciting roadmap ahead of us this year and into the next. So before turning the presentation over to Paul, I want to call out four signposts. Number one, today's update is a continuation of the program trajectory we communicated to you in May 2023, updated in January 2024, and will be back to update you next year, January 2026. I'd encourage you to listen for how the security strategy coalesces into three pillars. One, measured accountability. Two, detect more and respond faster. And three, expanded and improved common controls. Each of those pillars has as well, specific objectives and implementation goals for the present year 2025. The board materials include a privileged and confidential document that characterizes these topics. It goes into more detail, and it follows up on particular items and related matters over the past year. The document is lengthy, but it is substantive and informative. It's important. Our aim has been and is to engage with you on the contents in that document with continually increasing clarity and granularity. We consider that report canonical. You might consider Paul's presentation, it's about to follow, as an orientation or overview of those contents. So lastly, I want to express four thank yous before handing it over to Paul. First, thank you to the board. While this is an annual reporting requirement, your attention and engagement over, over these years to information security, and more generally, operational integrity, has been and continues to be substantive and not merely a checkbox. Hence, your conceptual frame for this and ours for it is the same. We engage in this because the forthrightness and accountability are not only our own individual personal values, but because they're fundamental to safeguarding information and supporting the missions of this, of this great institution. So establishing this dialogue and continuing it with you is fundamental. Thank you for your time and attention. Secondly, to the chancellor, provost, and your joint cabinets, thank you. Information security accountability and sound operational practice stem from the executive officers. It's only with a shared commitment to information safeguarding that we experience the willingness to engage that we can and do have direct and sometimes difficult and uncomfortable conversations, that we create clarity, and that we establish and document methods which facilitate and align unit objectives. So information security, it has an unavoidable, an unavoidable and necessary compliance component, but it is and can be enabling establishing paths to accelerate and explore and advance the mission. Thirdly, as we've been saying for a couple of years now, sound information security is based on routine and well-founded operational practice, whether information technology, financial, risk management, human resources, or others. Our information security position is made manifest in the processes, tasks, steps that faculty and staff, students, carry out every day. Just for example, we've had more than a fourfold increase in our rate of multi-factor authentication events this past year. That's because that is a crucial protective control that has been more widely spread, more widely appreciated, and thus more frequently executed by everybody. Thus, my third thanks is to everybody in our community. Fourth, I'd like to thank Paul. You forge an extraordinary relationship with our closest partners in information security that the Information Security Office works with every day, whether it's Catherine Georgia in the Institutional Privacy Office, IT directors across campus, or with representatives from state agencies and federal agencies that we work with in sometimes difficult contexts. But also with various groups across campus who have episodic or ad hoc needs. It's hard, it's not glamorous. Too often, people, or at least I'll say I'm not glamorous about it, you might be, but it's hard, it's not glamorous, and too often, people seem to think that the sole criterion of success is the absence of thanks, the absence of incidents, the absence of fear. Rather, Paul's approach has brought to us a vision and leadership that sparked approaching this as a program, with a program perspective, building capabilities, not just as spot cleaning the most recent incidents and fears. Instead, we endeavor to provide a cohesive strategy based on an understanding of what kind of organization we are, how we are arrayed, and what our obligations are, and our opportunities. Thanks. You drive, you drive us to tackle the things that are hard and unglamorous, but that also makes them rewarding. So my last note. As the detailed report is privileged and confidential, if we get into questions or our responses get into topics that are related to that matter, we will respectfully ask that we take those up in a closed session. So Paul, if you'd please take the podium. Thank you.
Let's see. Okay, good afternoon, and I sincerely appreciate the opportunity to update you today. My objective, as Mike alluded to, is to touch on the highlights from this year's written update. So we'll spend the opening remarks covering some of the work that we committed to doing in 2024 and the outcomes from that. And then, well, before moving on to what is coming for 2025 and beyond, we'll spend time restating the organizational context that is driving our security strategy and use that to re-articulate exactly what that strategy is. I think that will be helpful in motivating and organizing the roadmap that we have ahead for information security for Carolina. And will also help us when we come to what to expect for next year's update in looking at the quantitative reporting that we'll begin to introduce into this reporting cycle. So with that said, I'm, on the screen now are 12 initiatives that if you look back at 2024's initiative or update, we said that we would take on. I'm pleased to report we accomplished all of those things. It's too long with the interest of time to cover them all in depth, but there's four that I do want to call out. The first, on HIPAA security, we engaged a outside assessor to do our mandated HIPAA security risk assessment as an institution. I think the headline for me with that assessment are two things. One is there are no critical observations, so it gave us the opportunity to create a strengthening plan in response to that work and to get agreement across the institution to carry out those strengthening efforts between now and April of 2026 when we do our next HIPAA security risk assessment. The second thing that stands out for me from this year's HSRA is that it created a much stronger collaboration across the institution, moving HIPAA compliance more towards the routine. Second, a second example of that is on the second column on payment card security. In strong collaboration with our partners in finance and operation, we saw a worldwide move from the payment card brands to an updated data security standard, created a great deal of work worldwide as organizations who deal with payment cards struggle to meet that new and more strenuous requirement. I'm pleased to say all 120 of Chapel Hill's merchants moved to that new standard, and Finance and Operations was able to deliver that attestation without exception and on time to our bank. Again, that's, I think, the headline there is, security compliance has become routine, certainly in that context. Two other topics that we delivered in, or two other initiatives we delivered in 2024 that I wanted to call out. One was endpoint detection and response, the third bullet on the left. In last year's update, we described what this endpoint detection and response is. It is effectively a monitoring platform that spans tens of thousands of devices across UNC's technical infrastructure. It is one of our primary eyes and ears to see attacks before they happen, potentially stop them before they happen, or as they're starting to occur, to quickly see them and respond. Last year, we expressed concern with the vendor that we had in place and the third-party augmentation of our own in-house detection and response efforts, that we were concerned about spiraling costs, and we're also concerned about the efficacy of that platform that did not exist when that platform was originally selected and deployed. And so we committed to identifying a new vendor, making that migration. That work is completed without significant incident or any kind of gap in coverage during that transition. I'm also pleased to report that an increased coverage of that monitoring network by 24, 25% across the institution's devices. It's added new capabilities besides, so in addition to monitoring devices, it also now correlates identities, which is a significant source of cyber attacks. And finally, we've seen the speed at which we are able to respond to these attacks, go from in some cases, days to hours, and in others, from hours to minutes. Again, with the augmentation of our third-party monitoring program that backs our own in-house detection and response program. Finally, I'll mention network security. In combination with our ITS networking team, we've increased the rigor of security controls in our guest networks while we've extended our guest networks in support of the mission. We've increased security segmentation within our core networks. And we've also added new detection capabilities targeting particularly Internet of Things or specialized devices that are common occurrences on a research network. So we're able to see more and again, respond faster. Now, before going on to what we have in place, or what we have, what we have planned for 2025, I did want to set the table with the organizational context that's driving our security strategy. In a nutshell, at Carolina, the, there is a requirement to allow non-student employees to instantiate and operate technology in pursuit of the mission. That is not unique to Chapel Hill. That is common to most research universities in the United States. The significance of that is that, that means that control of that technology is distributed across the environment. It's not localized to a specific single IT team or even a small number of IT teams. There is control over technology across a wide reach of the institution. And if we couple that with a very plain language understanding of security, security is those things that we do day in and day out that result in a better security posture. Those actions, by and large, require direct control of technology to perform. That means that we're depending on a distributed environment to take those requisite actions on a regular basis that in the end results in a secure posture of the institution. With that understanding, it gives us the two fundamental challenges that our security strategy must address. Challenge number one is it's a numbers game. If you have a distributed set of controls, we should anticipate a higher rate of protective control failure. And observation or challenge number two is it makes it much more difficult as an organization to have oversight and assurance, and even indeed learn lessons from those things that we are seeing happening on the ground, so that as an organization, we can redirect our efforts, change our strategy, redeploy our resources. So our security strategy must address those two facts. Before we turn our attention to what that strategy is in a nutshell, I did want to add one more layer for consideration. So last year, we covered a national standard cybersecurity framework, national standard. And we express that, or express that as a taxonomy that groups all the various activities that go on in the name of security within an organization, from an organization level all the way down to a person running a system. And is a taxonomy that's capable of describing all of those efforts, among other things, that you use that framework for. And on the screen here, down the left, are the six high-level buckets that all of those activities roll up into. And I think it tells a very plain language story about what security is and how do you achieve it. And what I would like to do is overlay on top of that, this concept of having distributed control over our technology. So when you look at that, we can look at those, those collections of activities, whether it's govern, detect, or respond, that we can do centrally. And in fact, what you saw in our 2024 report is we took significant efforts to take detection and response, which had been somewhat distributed, and fully centralized it, right? And other things, because of the nature of control, you would expect protective actions to be largely distributed. That's true. With the exception of the circle where we're saying there are opportunities to deploy common controls across the entire environment that any given information system might inherit. Firewalls, single sign-on, multi-factor authentication, things of that sort. But by and large, the bulk of that work is still local to that system in order to apply those protective controls. And with this analysis, it starts to suggest the three areas that indeed become the pillars of information security strategy going forward. The first area is how do we increase clarity on what those requirements are? How do we increase how deliberate we are in coordinating the central security processes with those actions in every single unit? And how are we measuring the security outcomes so that those outcomes, those measurements are shown to the unit so they may adjust? And those aggregate measures are also presented here. And that's what, as Mike referred to, we're calling measured accountability. Second area is that while control of these, these systems is distributed, visibility of them need not be. And so what we seek to do here is to ensure that we have global visibility to all assets, all technology used by Carolina, whether it's on-premises, or whether it's vendors, or public cloud infrastructure. And how do we not only have an expanded visibility of all the technical infrastructure that makes up the institution, but we can expand the kinds of things that we can detect, and we can expand the, the speed, or increase the speed at which we're responding to those events? And that is our creative name of detect more, respond faster. And then finally, we want to look at where there are their opportunities, even though there are, there isn't an asymptote, there's a limit to how much we can shift from a local burden of protective controls and instead instantiate these as common controls where we increase the efficiency of scale and also increase the assurance that the right things are happening while we're offloading those burdens on those units. And that is the expanded common controls pillar. And so then restated, we see here the, the three pillars as they're laid out. I won't read through those, that slide. But the way in which this is used going forward, 2025 and beyond, is you will see all the specific initiatives that we will deliver in 2025 will roll up under one of these three pillars. In addition, there is at least one large multi-year initiative under each pillar that I do want to spend a little bit of time covering today. And so for measured accountability, we will call that the Coordination of Security Initiative. Under detect more, respond faster, we have our Security Operations 3A, and I will demystify that name when we get to it. And then for common controls, we have our Identity Uplift, where while we are seeking to find more opportunities to instantiate common controls, we will start with the security of our digital credentials. So taking those in turn, Coordination of Security builds on a procedure that was instantiated in 2018 with the chancellor's key controls attestation. So from that starting point, we are expanding where we will obtain delegated security authorities across each unit that will coordinate with their unit leader, their dean or their vice chancellor. They will also coordinate directly with the security program to instantiate four cybersecurity risk management processes that are listed down the left of the slide. So this will accomplish a number of things. It will ensure that we have sufficient penetration of the security controls and processes across all units. It will establish the bidirectional feedback on evolution of the program, needs of the unit. And it will also give us a forum in which we can inject measured outcomes as we're measuring the outcomes or the results of these, these standards and these processes we're implementing it through these four key controls. When we come to the end of this presentation, we'll touch a little bit on the KPIs that we'll use, starting in 2026, to report on progress. Security Operations 3A is, in a sense, at the opposite end of the spectrum. So while coordination of security is very much about process governance. coordination, communication, security operations is very much at the technical end of the security spectrum. This is security's needle in a haystack problem. So as you use technology, they, computers, computer networks generate a vast amount of data about their use. And so it is the job of a detection and response team to find ways to aggregate vast amounts of data and sift through it, looking for signs of weakness or signs of attack. And so many of the things that we described in 2024 already had improved our visibility in terms of what we can see, what we can respond to. But the major multi-year initiative that I wish to point out here is that there are eight specific capabilities that we must add to our aggregation, analysis and automation environment in order to position Carolina for where we want to be in the future for security operations. And hence, the 3A is indeed the aggregation, analysis and automation. Finally, identity uplift. So digital credential security is bar none, our most important common control. There's a number of things that we've done, as you would see in this year's report in 2024, to improve the security of our digital credentials. In addition to a long-term proposal similar to security operations 3A to fundamentally overhaul how we approach digital credential security that we will deliver and report on in next year's update. There's immediate, an immediate term and a middle term set of objectives that we have in store for this year. One is fundamentally changing how we verify digital, the credentials of a caller calling into a service desk. And another is increased phishing-resistant, multi-factor authentication methods. That's the short term. Medium term is a plan for privileged access management. Privileged access are those, the keys of the kingdom, if you will, the, the IT service providers that have that privileged access to those systems. It is a more rigorous way in which we would manage that level of access going forward for Carolina. So I referred again and again that besides those three major initiatives under each of those pillars, there's a lot of other work that we have planned for 2025 that we will deliver in 2025 and report to you in 2026. I won't read through those here, but I will point out, for example, the, the two bullets at the bottom of the left column are perfect examples of that see more or detect more, respond faster. And then finally, what we will introduce in next year's update is we'll begin including quantitative reporting, where we will, we have proposed in this year's update, 10 key performance indicators with 17 additional detailed KPIs that are organized by pillar. I believe it's going to take us three years before we're regularly reporting all 27, but we will begin reporting the first third next year and we'll add another third each year until we're all the way to 100%. And then the one final comment that I'd like to add that is not in this year's update because it postdate, it happened after the, the report was complete. In December 27th, Health and Human Services issued a notice for proposed rulemaking where they intend to strengthen the HIPAA security rule. Right? And to be direct, it's too early to say what the impact is going to be on the institution. I am happy to report though, that we are in a good position. So when we look at some of the proposed changes that are under review by Health and Human Services, such as you must have a written implementation of your HIPAA security rule. We did that in 2024 with the policy updates that you'll see in the written update. And that's what I had for you today. I appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Is there any, any questions that from the board? Is there a need to go into closed session? Okay. If not, there's no further items for this committee. We will adjourn without objection. Oh, oh, sorry. Go ahead.
So in this meeting, you know, I guess thinking about 2025 and New Year's resolutions, perhaps the chancellor could identify what the purpose of the committee would be and what we're hoping to do when we receive these reports because we received the materials and the package of information, including the detailed security, cybersecurity study. Read through that, then come in, then receive another presentation. Just trying to make sure we're not part of red tape if we're simply receiving information, but not doing anything with it. And like on the KPIs, it's mentioned in the detailed report and this isn't a security item, but that it's, you know, really coming up with KPIs. And the question is what, what's going to be done with that information? Cause there's a cost and time involved in measuring that. So just want to make sure that if we're generating all this information for the board or for others, that it's actually being used. Otherwise, maybe it's some of the red tape we could cut. If, if nothing's going to be done with the KPI information, for instance, do we need to measure it?
Yeah. Thank you, trustee Curtis. It's a, it's an excellent question. I view the information provided to this committee as part of the, the board's ordinary review and oversight function. And obviously information security, to take that example, is a key part of our overall risk management environment. I think the KPIs are what the, the, the information, Department of Information Technology use to measure their, their performance and our objectives throughout the year. So they're not just being produced for, for purposes of, of the board, their, their internal objectives. But if there's a way to make the materials more effective or more relevant to, to the board, we're always eager to have that conversation.
And just to be clear, I thought the KPIs were going to be measured, but we're not measured yet. Is that? We know.
Mr. Barker.
Were the, were the KPIs measured already or is that planned for this upcoming year to, to address them?
So some of them have been measured, but they weren't reported this year. So the proposals that we would report roughly a third of them in the 2026 update.
Okay.
But to be clear, those are performance indicators that you're using internally to measure the performance of the, of the department against your own objectives and that you're reporting to the board for information. You're not creating those KPIs solely for purposes of this committee's review.
So the attention is that is, those are the measures that would change the things that we actually do day to day. And it's not only measures against the department, it's also measures where we're targeting the security program, those common controls that we're operating. So it should be all in those departments in the room.
Does that answer your question? Thank you.
Mr. Bling. Just one thing that would be helpful for me, I don't understand any of this stuff. I've fallen for like seven phishing schemes in the last 10 months. I'm the worst nightmare. How have y'all done this year? How many major security breaches have you had relative to past years?
Yeah.
I mean, that, that's kind of what I would be interested in knowing as opposed to all the technological mumbo jumbo. Just how, how are we doing?
Yeah. So what, what we might want to do is if, if we wanted to take that up, we could get into the part of the report where we do talk through the most significant investigations. We had no breaches this past year. Right? But we do maintain a very active investigative cybersecurity investigation team, detection and response, where we get reports, we get, we see signs of weakness, we're increasingly treating vulnerabilities with the same urgency that we would treat an attack. That is also part of what our strategy is. All that's laid out, I'd be happy to get into all of that, but I'm happy to report we've had no breaches.
Perhaps I could rephrase the question. We've, so we've had no breaches, which is great. Have we seen an increase in, in attacks? Or, or is it relatively, you know, static level compared to what you've seen in past years?
There, there's a couple of reasons why I'm not, I have no intention to be cagey, but why that's a difficult question to answer. It, it is harder to quantify exactly what an attack is, right? Because from our perspective, we see probes of our infrastructure all the time. And it's hard to say, is 20 different probes from a single attack group? Or is that 20 different attack groups that have a single probe? You know, so there, there's a counting problem there. The other reason why it's a difficult thing to assess, and we, we do have stats on this and you will see as we report the KPIs next year, that is, the detection response team is probably the furthest along and most advanced in order to be able to generate these KPIs. Like how many of these are we seeing? What stage in an investigation do they get to and so forth? We've seen an increasing busyness of that team for sure, like the number of investigations that they're investigating. But there's probably two causes for that, that may confound being able to say that that's an increase in attacks. One reason is that over 2024, we've been very adamant that we will have a single incident response process for the institution. So prior to last year, it had been more distributed than it ought to be. So our incident response plans, there, there must be a single plan. It has to be vetted by our, our office of the university council. This is something we regularly test. We report on it to our insurance underwriters. We have a forensic retainer in place to assist if, if we had an incident that rose to that level. There's a number of reasons why we cannot, as an institution, tolerate distributed incident response. So that means we've driven a lot more reports to our central detection and response team. The second reason why that's hard to answer is we've also increased our visibility. And so the more you see, the more you start to investigate. So if I had to guess, if I was to offer a guess, I would say, yes, we've seen at least the same number, if not an increase in attacks, but it's, it's very difficult to tease that out with any kind of quantitative rigor.
So last question, in your opinion, or do we have adequate security protocols and protections in place?
So I, I, I'm, I think I've, I may have mentioned this to the chancellor once, as I'm a professional paranoid. So like, at what point is it ever enough? So I, I will, I, there are terrific teams doing great jobs here, like in all sincerity. Like we've seen that throughout the year, like the, the ability for us to do the transition and then endpoint detection and response stuff that I spoke to was in large testimony to an excellent distributed IT community at Carolina. Right? That, that is not solely on the security team, but that went so very well. So we have tremendous people doing a great job. That said, I, those three pillars and those major initiatives underneath, I will rest a lot easier when those are fully implemented.
Okay. Thank you.
At, at one point, the board heard a presentation from Mr. Barker. And I believe this preceded your being interim chancellor at the time. But my recollection is, is that there was an internal sort of test on a phishing expedition. And the hit rate was maybe a third or something like that, 30 plus percent fell for the phishing scam. And that caused some discussion among, you know, what, what have we got to do to better train the people that are looking for this? Has there been any sort of internal test like that since that occurred?
I believe, I, I have not my answer to whether we've done that particular thing, but the primary mitigating control for phishing has not been pro act, go out and try to hoodwink and do our own sort of faux phishing scams, but rather to strengthen multi-factor authentication and number matching. So what we've tried to do is in, have enormous increase in that particular, particular protection level that is a technical control that is a hard stop. That's part of the reason why we've had such an incredible reduction in exposures of a phishing sort and whatnot. Now, so far as these sort of honeypot type of go out and phishing campaigns, I think we had some units carry them out. Paul can answer the specifics of that better than I can.
Yeah, we haven't done anything that's institution-wide since that last update, but we have done those in pockets across the institution. I, my experience, having done those systematically at other institutions for years, is that they candidly do not work. They are useful because they generate good discussions with people that in order to get people to stop clicking and giving up their credentials, the only solution is that strong phishing-resistant, multi-factor authentication. Besides the, the work that we propose, because you, I think you may have noted that that is on, some of that is in our short term and some of this is in our medium-term identity uplift work that we have ahead. Buried in the written report, we're also evaluating a service that would add an additional phishing protection that we don't have today. That's very difficult to safeguard. And that would be where we have, somebody would go to Google and they would create an email account and they would make it appear if it's coming from the chancellor. And it's, they would set the display names that looks like it's from the chancellor. But if you look at it, it's clearly coming from some random Gmail address. That's hard to stop because it doesn't actually violate any kind of technical control that you can put in place. But we're currently, we are currently running an evaluation of an AI tool that creates a a model that allows us to say that that is probably not legitimate and that we could potentially stop it. We don't know if that's going to go forward or not because we haven't finished the evaluation, but that evaluation is currently in flight. So I think, I think that we will continue to do the awareness efforts for sure, but they are, they are not, we will not be able to train our way out of phishing.
I didn't expect we could train our way out of it. I think that, that my recollection is that roughly a third of the people fell for the phishing scam that were enticed. And I was wondering whether or not that, that was on a downward slope is what I was wondering.
I see. I, I, I think that it is. I mean, and I base that, that optimistic assessment on those limited phishing simulations that have been done in various departments. And also based on the reports that we see come into the detection and response team. So that's true. I think also we, we have work ahead of us too, because the, the way in which we do credentials, we need to make it easier for people to recognize what is an authentic message, what is an authentication, authentic authentication portal? And we've got work to do on that front. And that is also part of that long-term identity uplift work that I alluded to.
Mr. Bling.
Does the scope of your work include our affiliated entities?
It does. So what you'll note, I can't remember offhand the appendix letter, but there is an appendix in this year's written report that outlines a security and privacy addendum that we wish to attach to those AE agreements. And also in the coordination of security that, that's also contemplated there. So how do we have those delegated security authorities? And when do they need to include the AEs? As, and, and effectively, what we're saying is that all the security policies and procedures apply to the AE so long as they're operating on our network or they're trafficking in our data.
But does your team have access to the servers of the AEs and the email of the AEs if they're not UNC emails?
So if they are, if they're using their own email servers, we don't. And if they're using UNC's email servers, we do.
Yeah.
Right? So it goes back to if we have an obligation, if UNC, if Carolina has an obligation to protect it, the requirement, as I think you'll see in that appendix, makes it very clear, we require the access necessary to do the monitoring and response, and they have to follow all the same security standards. And through that coordination of security, they'll have to attest to those standards.
So I am Jim Bling, not very familiar with technology. But I have a question here is with AI coming in so strong, I can technically have our chancellor here send out a video saying that this is what we have to do. And that is totally AI. All right? What are you doing? And what is the response time for you guys to get that? If something comes out like that, because I have been fooled many a time on other issues. Okay? But this can happen to all the students, emails, whatever. How are we combating that AI component of what is going to happen? Because it's a new field and are we having the resources to combat that?
So I take your question to be primarily about the so-called deep fakes. Right? Where you, you can no longer trust your eyes, so to speak.
Definitely not.
Right? Yeah. And so that, that, that's a challenge, right? The, the term that you'll see in the written report is identity proofing.
Yeah.
Uh, and so there is work that we've outlined, some of it is before July of 2025, changes to our identity proofing methods. But that doesn't cover the scope of what you're pointing out. Like if there was a a fake video message from the chancellor that went out, right? And so how, what that would look like today, if that were to happen, the expectation is you, that anybody at the institution should contact security@unc.edu, which is our, which will go straight to our detection and response team. That detection response team is 24/7. Right? And so they have written playbooks that they would follow that would include things like identifying that there is a spoof message and frankly deleting it wherever we can. Like if it's going through our email like if it's going through our email systems, we will purge it from the email systems. That doesn't stop it from happening, but I'm describing that that's what we would do today.
Oh, follow-up question, okay? What if something comes out like that? Okay, I'll give you a good example. You know, the country of India, there is a AI doc thing coming in all areas saying that Trump is taking a dip in one of those rivers with Trump and Elon Musk and all those people. It's so realistic, all right? But we know it does not, it did not happen. Same way, something that realistic comes through the chancellor, chances are if I'm a student, I'm going to believe it because it is that good, right? So say you get it, what will be your response time to send it out to everybody saying, hey, this is a fake one, don't take it?
Like, how long would that take us?
Yes. When you say 24/7, is that somebody manning a station there when the student calls saying, hey, don't pick it up?
Yes.
Or is it somebody that has to be?
No, that is a, that is a person in front of incoming messages in the, in all the various monitors that we have.
Exactly.
There's an on-call schedule that escalates ultimately to me and to Mike. So all of that is, is part of it. So what that would mean is, if that was reported, I would estimate we would be able to identify, confirm that that's a fake message probably within the hour, right? I mean, this is a hypothetical, right?
Yeah, hypothetical, yeah.
And so within that same hour, we would start that purge. Now, if we needed to send, we would engage communications. And if we needed to send a broader message because we thought it was significantly upsetting or impactful, we would have that underway. And that message would probably be out within less than an additional hour on top of it, right?
That's it.
Thanks.
It's good.
It's good.
Any more questions? That was ten.
All right. Good afternoon, everyone, and welcome to the January meeting of the Committee on External Relations. But first, I'm going to turn it over to the chancellor.
I just wanted to welcome Representative Ray Pickett and Representative Kyle Hall. We appreciate you all being here and joining us today. Thank you for being here. Thank you for your job.
Thank you, Chancellor Roberts. And Dida, as Chair of this committee, I must remind all members of their duty under the State Government Ethics Act to avoid conflicts of interest and appearances of conflict of interest. If you know of any conflict or appearance of conflict with respect to any matter coming before the committee today, please identify it at this time. All right, I'll ask Chris McClure to please call the role.
Chair White, Vice Chair Valentine.
Yes.
Mr. Blaine. Mr. Bryan. Mr. Kalapa. Mr. Kodes. Mr. Meekins.
Yes.
Mr. Patel.
Yes.
Mr. Pryor.
Here.
Ms. Taylor.
Here.
Madam Chair, you have a call.
Thank you. Our first item of business is to review and approve the open and closed session minutes of the November 6 meeting. Has everyone had a chance to review the minutes? And if so, do I hear a motion to approve the open and closed session minutes for November 6? Thank you, Chair Pryor. And second from trustee Brian, thank you. All of us in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, the motion carries. Our next item of business is to make recommendations to the board about appointments to the WUNC Board of Directors. This board is the authority to appoint the members of the WUNC Board of Directors, and we plan to fill one vacant seat today. The nominee for this appointment is Nancy Bailey, Account Director at ENV Strategic Communications. You have the materials in your packet. Do I hear a motion to approve the proposed nominee for the WUNC Board of Directors?
Just one.
Just one. Today. So any other? All right. Thank you, trustee Meekins. And I have a second from trustee Kodes. Any discussion or debate? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you, the motion carries. Both of these items will be placed on the consent agenda for the full board's approval tomorrow. Next, for information on our agenda, we have this afternoon, we're going to hear a legislative update from Amy McConkey, Director of State Affairs, and also from Kelly Dockum, Director of Federal Affairs. And I'm guessing Amy's going to get first, welcome.
Hey there, good afternoon, Chair White, Vice Chair Valentine, Chancellor and members. It's great to be before you. Let's see here. Here we go. Okay. I've been asked to be brief, and I'm going to be brief. But, and today, we're going to do a quick recap of the election. We're going to look at the Stein administration, who he has selected for his cabinet. We're going to preview the North Carolina General Assembly, the committees and the leadership in both chambers, and talk a little bit about engagement. But before we do that, I just want to say that it has made a strong impact on me just over the past several months, the support for the direction of this university, the leadership of this university. And it just, it's, it's very apparent down at the legislature, that's across parties, across chambers, at the administration level as well. So thank you for, for your leadership, and it's a very exciting time to be a Tar Heel. All right, here we go. Okay. This is a review, looking back at the election, we're in a very similar place to where we were at the start of the last biennium. As you can see, the North Carolina House, we are just short of a supermajority. In the North Carolina Senate, there is a supermajority. Discussion in the House about a functional and working majority as conservative Democrats side with the majority party to vote for things like the budget and other policy matters. So that's something to watch in the coming session. Looking at the Stein administration, as you can see here, we've noted cabinet appointees who are Carolina alum. So we've got several there to note. Also, some key staff roles in the administration, including Governor Stein's Chief of Staff, Seth Durman, who was a former student body president of ours, as well as the Deputy Chief of Staff and Advisor, Deputy Chief and Chief Operating Officer, and some other high-level positions in his office. Looking at our cabinet officials, we can quickly go down the list. We've got Administration, Mr. Gabe Esparza, Dev Sanghvi with HHS, Tina Piqueon with IT. We've got a Carolina alum and a member of our Board of Visitors, Lee Lilly, who is leading Commerce and directing economic development efforts. On behalf of the Administration, Stacy Meyer, NHR, Eddie Buffalo, Public Safety, McKinley Wooten in Revenue, a lot of these are going to be folks who have been around state government for some time. Jocelyn Mallette, Carolina alum, leading Military and Veterans Affairs. Leslie Cooley, Dismuke, she actually has a Carolina degree, so that's my mistake. That should be in light blue, an adult correction. Joey Hopkins, again, at Transportation, Kristen Walker at OSVM, Reed Wilson at DEQ, and Pam Cashwell, another alum at Natural and Cultural Resources. We look forward to working with the Administration. Looking at the General Assembly for the biennium, they convened for a one-day session earlier in the month that was an organizational session, largely ceremonial. They come back a week from today to begin their work in earnest. They have already passed their rules in each chamber, and that's where we find the bill filing deadlines, which you can see there. So this one, we'll have a look at the policy bills that are coming through for the coming biennium. That crossover deadline, look for May 8th, a lot of flurry of activity as the bills need to cross over from one chamber to the next to remain eligible. Of course, there's always a race to get that budget passed by the end of the fiscal year. Sometimes we get there, sometimes we have to push, so we'll see. And then key issues to watch for this session, there's a lot of support, of course, for Western North Carolina recovery. That's foremost priority for both chambers, as well as the governor's office. So you'll see a strong focus on that early in the session. Gaming is another issue that's going to remain at the forefront, as is medical marijuana. Looking at our priorities, the Board of Governors has those, and they will vote to approve at their February meeting. So we look forward to receiving that vote and working in earnest for those priorities in the coming session. Okay, looking at leadership, we have a new speaker, Representative Destin Hall. He is in his fifth term in the House. He was elected in 2017 from Caldwell County. He cited, as he, in his acceptance speech, his Speaker, Western North Carolina Recovery, Education, the economy and public safety as top priorities. We also have a new pro tem. He's been serving for a long time, but he's new in this role, Mitch Setzer, from Catawba and Iredale Counties. He's been in the House since 1999. Brendan Jones is the new Majority Leader from Columbus and Robinson Counties. And we have a smattering of other leaders there, which I'll quickly name. Steve Tyson, Deputy Majority, Carl Gillespie as Whip, and Matthew Winslow and Jeff Zenger as our conference co-chairs. Looking over at the Democratic side, another Tar Heel continues in his role as Minority Leader. That's Robert Reeves, an attorney from Chatham County and parts of Randolph. We've got Cynthia Ball remaining in her role as Deputy Leader. She's from Wake County. We've got another Tar Heel, Brandon Lofton as Legislative Chair. He's from Charlotte. And Vernetta Alston, a Tar Heel from Durham as Conference Chair. On the Senate side, we have a consistency at the top. Senate President Pro Tem Phil Berger, who is serving his 13th term, eight, leading the GOP majority in the Senate, remains in that role. He cited Western North Carolina recovery as a key priority of his, and of course, is proud of the fiscal responsibility that his chamber has, has, has worked hard to and has been a priority of theirs. Deputy Pro Tem Ralph Heiss continues in that role from Western North Carolina. And double Tar Heel and Majority Leader Paul Newton remains in that role as well from Cabarrus County. We've got two new whips, both Tar Heels, Senator Amy Gailey from Alamance County and Senator Todd Johnson from Union County. Look forward to working with them. On the Democratic side, we've got a new leader. Senator Sidney Batch of Wake County is new in that role. She's replacing Senator Dan Blue. She is actually a triple Tar Heel and very excited about working with us in the coming session and in this new capacity. Whip remains Jay Choudary, and Julie Mayfield remains the Caucus Secretary. Okay, looking at our Senate committees, those were announced recently. We do not yet have an announcement from the House on their committee chairs, but we expect that in the coming weeks. Looking at the Senate, Bill Rabin remains Rules Chair. Bill Rabin is from Southport and has been in that role for several sessions. Senator Michael Lee remains Chair of Education, but he's joined by Senator Brad Overcash of Union County and Senator Kevin Corbin of Western North Carolina. Very excited about working with them. You may see Senator Gailey, or you might, the name you will not see, you'll notice, is Senator Amy Gailey, who worked with us on the Education Committee in the prior session. She is moving over to a role in HHS, so we look forward to working with her on health policy. On appropriations, we've got the same names, Senator Ralph Heiss, Senator Brunt Jackson, and Senator Michael Lee. And then Appropriations Subcommittee on Education, we've got some new names here, Senator Paul Newton, Senator Brad Overcash, and Senator Kevin Corbin. Certainly look forward to working with these leaders in the coming session. So as I said earlier, the House has not announced their committee, they haven't announced their gavels yet for the coming session. They're working, they're reviewing the structure. Now is the time to do that with the new speaker. We expect an announcement in the coming weeks. Our guest, however, we certainly expect them to have key roles in the House. Both have had, had key roles on for higher red policy and budgeting decisions. So we are grateful, look forward to working with them both. Finally, real quick, just some interesting numbers that I pulled that I thought you might be interested to hear about. We've got seven new senators, that's 14% of the chamber, which has turned over, 23 new representatives, a little more, 19% there. There are 28 alumni in the General Assembly from Carolina, and it's an even split between Democrats and Republicans. And among that group, there are 40 degrees, so pretty great. We are, we have the highest number of alumni of any university there at the legislature. So great group of Tar Heels that we'll be working with. Finally, Senator Berger, I think I mentioned this before, serving his eighth term as Pro Tem. Destin Hall is our 121st Speaker of the House. Size of our budget, almost $31 billion. $622 million is the state appropriate, state appropriations to UNC Chapel Hill. So we are grateful to the state for that important support. They are our largest donor. Finally, I'll end on engagement. We've been busy working with groups across campus, student groups. I've worked with trustee Taylor on student government outreach at the legislature. Look forward to scheduling that in the, in the weeks ahead. Working with Pharmacy School on an event coming up, also Gillings in a joint event with the Law School and, and the Pharmacy School around innovation and biopharma. And finally, the Kenan Institute is planning a great event. All of these, we look forward to inviting elected officials to join us. Finally, the Carolina Alumni Association does a great job partnering with us. We're planning a watch party, which is always a lot of fun. We always pick an away game when they're in session. So this year, we picked the Virginia Tech game on March 4th. We look forward to having Chancellor Roberts there with us to cheer on the heels in Raleigh. And finally, we're working on, we're working with the Alumni Association on a legislative reception, but look for that date in May or June. And with that concludes my remarks. Glad to take any questions.
Thank you, Amy. Does anyone have any questions or comments? Trustee Kodes?
Thanks, Amy. I know we spent a lot of time kind of researching the legislature, trying to find out more about their connections to Carolina, letting them know about our projects and what we're doing. How much do we do in terms of gathering information back so that we analyze legislative priorities and how UNC can help solve those legislative priorities?
That's a constant work that we're doing on our part. And to the extent that you all have those conversations as well, would love to hear what you are hearing. Every meeting that we have, we're asking them what their priorities are, looking for ways that we can align and help. And I know they're looking for the same. It's a constant work in progress. I think what we could continue to do and improve is strengthen those ties between us and the board and make sure we're informing each other about the conversations that are happening so that we're all moving ahead.
Would you, if you're picking maybe three, what would you say are maybe three of the top priorities?
Sure. School of Civic Life and Leadership remains a key priority. Enrollment growth, there's, there's strong support at high levels for that. And, you know, I think there's a lot of interest in AI as well and how we're going to harness AI to the benefit of the institution and the state.
Okay, thank you.
I can add one thing to that. To your question, trustee Kodes, one of the things that we're also doing is we're doing a lot of outreach to the western part of the state. We've asked our deans and the folks who are doing, doing work in the western part of the state, we're inventorying that right now, and we'll work with our folks, our friends in the legislature, how can we be helpful? Not just what we're doing, but how can we be more helpful? So we want to listen as much as, you know, we can go out there and do things, but we want to do and be helpful and listen to how we can be helpful and how our different schools and our, our Center for Public Service and our different schools can be helpful in that. So we're, we are having those conversations.
I think that's something that would be very helpful for us, is to have that legislative priority list from the legislature's point of view, from both the House and Senate committees. priority list from the Legislature's point of view, from both the House and Senate committees, and make that list for 2025 and see how we can tick off some of those items. Because again, a lot of times we're focused on what we want from the Legislature, but what are those priorities that we can help solve as well?
Trustee Cottis?
I have a question on the budget allocation for UNC. You put like $666 or some million dollars? $622. What, when compared to the last year? Are we getting more or less?
We're getting more.
How much more?
Yeah. That number has been trending up. I can get back to you on how much more. I think we had some growth somewhere in the neighborhood of 5% year over year.
It was about $600 million last year.
Six, and now it is about 622.
Yep.
With this AI thing, is that enough for us?
It's never enough. No, I, we're, as Ms. McConkey said, we have been the grateful recipient of significant support from the General Assembly on a broad bipartisan basis going back decades. We obviously have significant legislative priorities that we advocate for and we're going to continue to advocate for those priorities. We've got a legislative request, specific funding needs that we want for particular programs, as well as some more aspirational strategic objectives. And I think we have a really good dialogue with our representatives in the General Assembly about those.
Thank you.
Hi, Amy. For the legislative priority on AI, could you expand on that a little bit more?
Um, you know, the, so the priority or the request that the legislators have for us to look into that. Yeah, so they have, so the Legislature is working on really understanding AI and how it can be used in the higher ed settings. There have been some moves to name a committee to look at this. That's certainly something that we're going to be involved in, be at the table for. And I'll continue to update, you know, they're just getting rolling. And of course, we've shared the Chancellor's Working Group on AI, and we'll be continuing to share those recommendations around AI with the Legislature. So it's somewhat early, but this is something, I think that this conversation's going to be unfolding more as the session moves forward. Be glad to keep you updated on that.
One more piece of information I want to share with you all. I had the chance to go to India about four or five weeks back. So I went to one particular state, Andhra. They themselves, just for AI, they are setting up a university, and the amount of money they are pumping in is $500 million. Just one state. So how do we be competitive with China, India, Vietnam, Europe? So my concern is here, is that money enough for us to educate our students on AI and have coursework that develops the AI component, which will be the big thing in five years? When I talk to them, this is how much money they are putting in. Just wanted to share it with you all, what I found out. So that is what we need to tell the Legislature. Hey, guys, wake up. Everybody out there is putting in a lot of money. This is one state, keep in mind, one state. Thank you.
Thank you, Amy, and thank you. That's fascinating, Emily. Any other questions or comments? All right, now I think we're going to hear from Kelly Duckham, Director of Federal Affairs.
You know, I was thinking, we should do walk-up songs, you know, to really like liven it up. Mine this week would be, "I Will Survive." All right, there's a lot going on, you guys, a lot. So thank you, as always, for the opportunity to be here this afternoon to give an update as to what is happening in Washington, DC. Today, my update's going to focus on the new 119th Congress. We're going to highlight the North Carolina delegation, the new members and committee assignments, update on the annual budget and appropriations process, and then this talk about a budget reconciliation, what that is, the key players, path forward. And then lastly, discuss Trump Administration 2.0, the flurry of executive orders from this past week, well, from this week, and the cabinet confirmation, so diving right in. I've shared this map with you all before. This is a product that our office, working with the Vice Chancellor for Research's comms team, we pulled together every new Congress. I sent it out, PDF, to all the congressional staff in the North Carolina delegation last week, and oh my gosh, I got flooded with, "Thank you so much, this is awesome, it's a great resource." And it's pretty simple. Each congressional district, we have the counties outlined there, and then we have the headshots and the contact information for the members that represent those districts. And so it's just a really great resource. Again, with our branding, you walk into any North Carolina Congressional Delegation office, and there you have our map up there. So just a resource that we have on hand and happy to share it with you all. I know my father-in-law, he always asks for one every new Congress, so happy to distribute those. So I've also shared this slide before, but just wanted to refresh everybody's memory about our new House delegation. You'll see here, we have a total of 14 offices. Underlined, italic, with the asterisk, those are our freshman members. And then with the light blue, those are our alumni that are in the House of Representatives. So we have Deborah Ross, Greg Murphy, Valerie Fushi, Virginia Fox, and Tim Moore. So it is really an exciting time. I joked, you know, "I will survive," but it's really, it's a hectic time, but I see opportunities and it's so exciting. I'll be in DC actually this week, next week, the next couple of weeks, getting around, meeting with our new members, the new congressional staff. We are so fortunate that we have a lot of alumni that are in key senior leadership positions in the variety of these offices, several chiefs of staff, legislative directors. So continuing to cultivate, foster more relationships there. So committee assignments, I want to talk about that, and I didn't want to put a ton of names up there, and in the interest of time, I can't go through everything. But I did want to flag that there have been a few, you know, with a new Congress, new committee assignments. Looking at our two senators, Senator Ted Budd, he has rolled off of the Senate Health, Education, Labor, and Pensions Committee, which obviously has key jurisdiction over healthcare and education. So sad to see him depart that, but he is now joining the Small Business Committee. Of course, will stay on Armed Services and the Commerce, Science, and Transportation Committee. So we will continue to work with his staff as it relates to NSF and, you know, other science funding agencies. Senator Tullis, he remains on his committee assignments. Flag, he stays on Senate Finance, which is going to be really crucial for any budget reconciliation, which I'll talk about later on. And then in the House, really fun, exciting announcement, our alumni, Virginia Fox, who was recently honored here by you all, she is now the first Republican woman to be the Chairwoman of the House Rules Committee. So as you know, she's former Chairwoman of the House Education and Workforce Committee. So she rolled off of that and is now going to be chairing the Rules Committee, which, as you all know, is very important. It determines which legislation will make its way through onto the House floor for votes and deliberation. Other key members, Chuck Edwards from the western part of the state, he remains on Appropriations Committee. He is our sole appropriator within the North Carolina delegation. He also is a member of the Budget Committee. Ways and Means, another key committee, especially related to budget reconciliation, Greg Murphy, also an alum, he is a member of that committee. And Congressman Richard Hudson, he maintains his seat on the House Energy and Commerce Committee, which has jurisdiction over HHS, which again, important for us with NIH being our largest funder. We have four members on the House TNI, Transportation and Infrastructure Committee. That's crazy. We have Rousher, we have Brad Knott, we have Addison McDowell, and Valerie Fushi. So, you know, we are very fortunate here that we have a lot of folks, experts, as it relates to transportation issues, and excited to come in and share exactly what our faculty and our researchers are doing here. So now that I went through that real fast, annual appropriations recap, December 2024, Congress passed a second continuing resolution, a CR. This current resolution expires March 14th. Very limited public discussions as to what exactly is going to happen. Are they going to package another omnibus? Are they going to wait and pass another CR? Leaders in both appropriations committees, they're working together, they're still talking, but there's been no release or public text around what this could entail. So they've acknowledged the urgency here, but we'll continue to update you all. If you subscribe to our weekly newsletter, we'll have information in there. At the same time, we have FY26 appropriations process that's going to be ramping up at the same time. As a reminder, you know, that kicks off the process, the president's budget proposal. And so with a new president coming in, it's probably going to be a little delayed late February, early March, and then it begins in earnest. But because we have new leadership in both the House and in the Senate Appropriations Committee, we are anticipating there's going to be new guidance and new determination as to, you know, if we'll be able to include any request related to community-directed projects, AKA earmarks. They've had those in very limited fashion over the past couple of years, but, so we'll be waiting to hear back as to what they plan to do with that for FY26. So budget reconciliation, I've teased that quite a bit. What is it? Raise your hand. Hang on, all right. Chair Pryor, what's budget reconciliation? Great answer. In a nutshell, it basically is just an easy way to expedite budget-related bills with a simple Senate majority. I've discussed how the Senate, they have these unique, complex rules. I love it, but, you know, for things like this with budget reconciliation, you only need 51 votes instead of the 60 votes that's needed for most legislation. There is a lot of limitations. There are limitations. I would say I don't want to be the Senate parliamentarian, that's for sure, because this person's going to get it left and right, you know. They are the ones to determine what's remain and what's not. You know, it's restricted, again, budget reconciliation's restricted to debt limit, revenues, and mandatory spending. There's this procedure, it's called the Byrd Rule, very charismatic, named after Robert Byrd from West Virginia, and where that's where they look and determine exactly what's available to be included and what's not. So the process, the key players in a nutshell, Congress will come together, they'll adopt this budget resolution, and then they'll direct specific committees. So I mentioned we have Senate Finance, we have House Ways and Means, you know, there will be a bunch of committees in here. We are fortunate, UNC Chapel Hill, that we have so many members of the delegation that are going to be playing key roles in these committees. And so then the ultimate goal is to have it all consolidated into one single bill or two bills, and then passed out by a simple majority. So the current status, you know, both chambers are controlled by Republicans. President Trump has made it very clear that he wants to move forward on budget reconciliation within his first 100 days. It's going to be a lot. I was here for when we passed the 2017 Tax Cuts and Jobs Act. Still have PTSD from that. It was Fast and Furious, and that's what's going to be happening here. So, you know, right now, nothing public has really been released, but the Senate Majority Leader Thune from South Dakota has indicated he would like to have a two-bill process. President Trump and the House Speaker, they have said, "Let's try to do this all in one bill." So there's a difference between exactly what the vehicle is going to be here. We do know that the House Budget Committee has released a few proposals, floating things around. You know, again, no formal text has been released, but in the interest of time, I can't share everything, but just wanted to emphasize that we are closely monitoring and engaging proactively. We've been doing this for several months, knowing that this was something that's going to be coming down the road. Endowments, that was a part of the 2017 package. You all might remember, who was here in 2017? No one? Okay, all right. Well, maybe we can have like a master class or something on that. There was a provision back in the 2017 Tax Cut Jobs Act where it would place an excise tax on endowments. In the original one in the House bill, it included both House, I mean, both public and private institutions. Thankfully, at the end of the day, public institutions were not included in that. But the 2017 tax bill, there were 58 institutions that have been included in this, and they put in a comment that in 2022, the tax raised from that was $24 million. And that's at a 1.4% on their net investment income. So for this new proposal that's being floated around, this would raise that to 14%. And there has been conversation, again, around including public institutions. So that is something that we are watching very closely, and I will continue to engage. I know that Chancellor Roberts, we're going to be heading up to DC in a few weeks, and going to be talking about, yeah, what we can anticipate in this reconciliation. But just wanted to flag that. Other possible provisions, you know, elimination of the deduction of interest on student loans, cancel of the amortization of R&amp;D expenses, eliminate nonprofit status for hospitals, you know, these are just a few things. And I'm not throwing it out there to stress anybody out, but just to let folks know that this is, it's going to be a lot. And so the timeline, again, for this is pretty ambitious. The goals are trying to pass that, pass everything by early April so that they can get this done within the president's first 100 days. So again, we're closely monitoring and engaging, and happy to chat with you all offline for any questions that you might have. Okay, Trump 2.0, Cabinet confirmations, I want to go through this quickly. This is a great graphic, courtesy of Axios. And I have a green checkmark by Cabinet officials. Now, of course, the Vice President, he doesn't have to be Senate confirmed, nor does the Chief of Staff, but still on the Cabinet. And I jumped the gun, I put John Ratcliffe, CIA, I checkmarked him because I thought they would get that done yesterday, but they haven't. So the only one that's been confirmed so far is Marco Rubio for Secretary of State. Want to point out Linda McMahon, she has been nominated to be the Secretary of Education, has North Carolina ties, is an alum of ECU. She also has a grandson that's here. And so we are looking forward to, you know, once she's confirmed, working with her and folks on her team to, again, you know, push forward our priorities as it relates to our students here on campus. So the Senate is moving quickly through the nomination process. Senator Leader Thune has prioritized these and has vowed to move quickly, and has even said that he will keep the Senate in on weekends if need be to get these done on time. So we'll continue to watch that. So for Trump, it was busy on Tuesday. So a lot going on. Interest of time, not going to go into it, but within hours of his inauguration, President Trump, he began fulfilling his campaign promises and issued 46 presidential actions all in one day. And when I say actions, that includes executive orders, memoranda, you know, proclamations. And so EOs, executive orders, basically are just these written directives that, you know, with valid authority. It's important to note that they are still subject to judicial review to ensure compliance with the Constitution, and Congress can counter any EO through legislation or budget reconciliation or other measures. You know, memoranda, that's less formal than the EOs, but it directs agencies on specific, you know, to take specific actions. So day one, keeping it brief and focused here, establishment of the new department. You all have heard Elon Musk, DOGE, Department of Government and Efficiency. And so that they're going to be focusing on cutting costs, consolidation. And so, you know, while they can move forward with this EO, ultimately, it's still going to have to be authorized by Congress. A few things to note, a lot in here as it relates to immigration, you know, ending of birthright citizenship, halting of refugee admissions, tightening of vetting for visas, federal workforce, and several EOs around hiring freeze for federal agencies. Return to office mandates have been put in place. And then DEI reversal of several programs and policies. So ending DEI, requiring all federal agencies to phase out DEI and environmental justice-related offices, positions, and initiatives within 60 days. Also eliminates associated grants, contracts, and performance requirements for federal employees, contractors, and grantees. It does, lastly, defines gender and updating federal policies there. And so establishes a binary definition of sex strictly related to male and female for all policies. for all policies, and also requires federal agencies to update identification documents to align with this definition. So that's just a little bit, a taste. A lot of these things are already being pointed to the courts, especially as it relates to the birthright citizenship, because it's in the Constitution, 14th Amendment. So these, you know, there will be several challenges legally, procedurally, but this is something that we are already working internally with our folks here on campus about impacts to our campus community with all of the executive orders. But this is what we anticipated, so we're not surprised. And we're just going to continue to monitor and gauge. So thank you all. Happy to take questions.
Thank you, Kelly. Trustee Kettis.
Thanks, Kelly. So obviously, on their legislative priorities and President Trump's reforms, they may require additional audits that we may want to do internally to be prepared for that. It'll also change some of the federal funding requirements as well, which, again, I think we could get ahead of and dig into now. That might be a good thing to involve Mr. Weber in. Going to legislative priorities as well, Representative Fox, now Chair of the Rules Committee, I think she'll be able to manage to get the College Cost Reduction Act through. And we had her come in in November. We had an extensive discussion about that and talked about adopting many of those policies now as well as requesting some state-level changes that would better data share. So I think there was a sense among the board that that was something worth pursuing. So I know we've had a couple of emails back and forth about it, but just wanted to see, Chancellor, if you felt like we could really dig into that and tackle addressing the College Cost Reduction Act policies and reforms and some of the state-level items now, even before the act is law, because it's, you know, good stuff for our students so that they know when they're signing up for a degree, what sort of ROI they'll earn on that. And it will allow us to prioritize programs as well.
Yeah, I think so. I think, yes, you and I have discussed before, I think it's good. It's good policy, even as proposed, regardless of whether it becomes law or not. But I agree with your assessment that it's likely, at least in broad brush strokes, to have a good chance of becoming law. So I think we're on the same page. I think there's a lot of good policy intent in the draft legislation. And Ms. Dockham has been in close communication with Congresswoman Fox's staff about that.
Yeah.
Right.
And, you know, there is possibility for budget reconciliation, you know, if they can work it to where, you know, especially repealing of certain things, you know, fiscally. So it's something we'll watch.
I would love to see us pull that data together. One, because it'd be useful information for us and make those policy changes, but it may also help Congresswoman Fox and her advocacy for that to occur on other campuses as well, to show that we can drive these and it's good policy, even if it's not law.
We agree. As you know, some of the ROI data is dependent on data sources that we, the full analysis is dependent on data sources that we don't fully control. So the UNC system ran into this issue, forming its own ROI study across the system, getting the necessary data from the North Carolina Department of Commerce to state-level agencies not able to get the necessary data across in a timely way. So I just mentioned that as a caveat on doing the full ROI calculation, but I agree, it's something we should be spending time on.
Yeah, I think that that will require state-level approval of data sharing with other states so that we can get better data.
Thank you, Trustee James.
Thank you. Kelly, thank you for the update and for everyone here. I was a sophomore in 2017. I was here.
Yes.
As my sophomore here.
I believe you.
A quick question about the executive orders. Is there, what is the thought about whether those will extend beyond the federal government to institutions that receive federal funding?
Great question. There is a lot. We're still reviewing, obviously, with us being, you know, active members in different higher ed associations such as APLU, Public Universities. We're still reviewing, but, I mean, there are things in there as it relates to DEI, and I can follow up with you with some specific text, that, you know, it designates, you know, federal agencies, they can look in and they can see, you know, or institutions complying with the law here. And if not, you know, taking away or taxing a portion of endowments. That's included in there as well. I mean, there's a lot. And so, yes, short answer, yes.
Thank you. Does anyone else have any questions or comments? All right. Thank you, Kelly.
All right. Thank you all.
Let's see, our next item is to hear an update from Mike Andreessen, Vice Chancellor for Development.
May Chair White, Board members, good afternoon. It's great to be before you and give you a little update on our fundraising activity for the year. This is, this has been the fall giving season. It's one of the busiest times of our year, and I'm just grateful for the broad support our campus receives from so many alumni friends, foundations, the like, and of course, members of this board. You have been giving, and we are very appreciative of that. So thank you. I'm not going to go into a full detail analysis, which I'd like to do at the March meeting, because we are still actually closing the books for the first half of the fiscal year, for the full calendar year. But as you see before you, as of December 31-ish, we're at $197 million in new commitments. That is the measurement of new contributions, pledges, deferred gifts, and the like. And that is up 14 and a half percent over the previous year of 172. That 254 five-year average is something we look at just to see the trend lines. I hope to stop saying this at some point, but I'll just remind you that that five-year average includes the old accounting standard, which we changed in 2024, and that's about a 15% hit, if you will. I did look yesterday morning at the latest totals. We're now up to 247, so we've had a $50 million jump in a couple of weeks. Again, that is a reflection of a lot of gifts that are being processed across 28 different units on campus. And the trend line for year-to-year comparison, we're actually up now 15%, another half percent on last year's total. So I think we're feeling very good about, even though last year was a down year or a soft year, we're seeing a nice rebound across all of our fundraising activity. Of course, we look at cash, also up about 10% of a prior year. Again, a lagging indicator in many ways, because that also includes payments from previous commitments. So more to say on the fundraising totals, but what I'd like to spend a few minutes on is something we've been talking about, which is activity. I mean, at the end of the day, gifts are an expression of great generosity, but they're also a reflection of a lot of hard work. I think I mentioned one of our previous meetings that the average major gift, that is a gift of 100,000 or more, usually from one's assets, takes about seven visits over a period of several years, from beginning to end. Now, for those who have been repeat donors, we are grateful for that, and that happens a little more quickly. But what you have here is in the first six months of this current academic year, we are actually up just shy 40% of formal proposals. That means a written request of 100,000 or more year over year. And that, we believe, will yield more gifts. And there we are, actually seeing about 9% up in gifts year over year in comparisons. So that's good. We're going in the right direction, but always worrisome, are we identifying more donors? And candidly, that was been one of the issues we talked about over the last, since the end of the last campaign. And we've put a real emphasis, established new metrics that every fundraiser is held accountable to. And we've asked them to go out into the world and make sure we've overturned every stone, if you will, to find the next generation of donors. By this slide, 340 individual people have been identified with the interest and capacity to give $100,000 or more, and that bodes well for the future. And really pleased with this number and pleased with the team, collective team's effort to do that work. But what are we raising '24, and how are we doing the next campaign? I've been sharing this with you along the way, but since our last meeting, I will tell you, we've heard from 25 academic leaders, all of our deans and vice chancellors, those who have fundraising as part of their portfolio, and really with the partnership with the provost. Just incredibly grateful. We've had five sessions of three or four hours each, groups of four or five, you see a photo there, where we've asked the deans and these academic leaders essentially four questions. First, what is the 10-year vision for your school? And can you write it down on one page or less? Secondly, what's the role of philanthropy? Thirdly, what are some priorities you want to raise money for? And ultimately, what will be your goal, your numeric goal for the next campaign? We've just focused on the first, these first two questions, and they're in various stages of development, but I will just tell you, I came away really impressed that our deans are thinking about not just what philanthropy can do, but more importantly, how does it align for their expectation and aspiration? And I can't wait to share some of that with you as we go forward in the next campaign. We'll have a refresh on those presentations coming up here in a week, incorporating the feedback that was given to these deans by themselves, by each other, and by our professional development team. But we're ultimately going to be sharing these different visions with about 45 external volunteers for two weekends at the end of April and May. And that'll be what we call a pressure test by donors to say, are these ideas resonating? Are they inspiring activity? This broad base of work will be the foundation for the next multibillion-dollar campaign. We'll look at those, along with the chancellor's leadership objectives from the four task forces that he's been talking about, and his expectation for the campus. And together, that will become the focus of our next campaign. So we've been busy. We're doing a lot of work. Stay tuned for more of that. I'll end my presentation today, and I hope do this on a regular basis, telling some wonderful gift stories, and you've heard me do that in the past. But today, I'd like to invite some colleagues to come and share their great work. So first up, we've got Mary Margaret Carroll, Associate Dean for Development at the Gilling School of Public Health, to tell us a gift story.
Good afternoon. From the clean water you drank this morning to the traffic laws that kept you safe on your way to work, public health works quietly behind the scenes to protect and enhance our lives every single day. I'm Mary Margaret Carroll, Associate Dean for Advancement from the UNC Gilling School of Global Public Health. As you may know, the UNC Gilling School of Global Public Health is ranked as the top public school of public health in the United States according to the 2425 U.S. News and World Report. Today, I am pleased to report to you on two impactful giving activities that have occurred at Gilling's. The first activity is a grant from the Ovarian Cancer Research Alliance. This $200,000 grant was awarded to Dr. Caroline Thompson of Epidemiology. Caroline is an associate professor in the Department of Epidemiology, and this $200,000 grant was to support her two-year project titled "A Mist Methods Study of Diagnostic Delay in Ovarian Cancer and Uterine Cancer." Caroline's project team is studying ovarian cancer diagnosis in North Carolina using analysis of administrative healthcare data to gain insights into who is most affected by these delays. The project examines the relationship between diagnostic delays, receipt of treatment, and cancer survival, particularly among lower-income patients. This private foundation grant will complement the recent $10 million federal grant awarded to Caroline and a team of UNC researchers from the Advanced Research Projects Agency for Health to develop the Cancer Identification and Precision Oncology Center at Carolina. The project is designed to improve cancer diagnosis and support personalized treatments by quickly collecting and analyzing a data range of health data. These awards underscore Caroline's commitment to understanding population-level patterns of cancer screening and diagnosis and identifying drivers of disparities in cancer-related healthcare delivery and outcomes across population. The second activity is a gift from a Gilling's alum, Mr. Mark Lee, Jr., BSVH 95, MS 97. Mark donated $350,000 on 12/31/24 to Gilling's to establish the Sue Holwell Lee Endowed Scholarship in the Department of Maternal-Child Health at Gilling's. This scholarship is named in honor of his mother, Sue. Sue is a Carolina alum who decided to go back to medical, to go to medical school and get her degree at a time when she had three children under the age of six at home. She became a pediatrician, working hard to meet the needs of the underserved county of Pamlico, North Carolina, for many years, and did not take a paycheck for much of that time. She also created an after-school program, a family mental health counseling program, and a summer program for all the benefit of the children in the county that she loves and serves. Mark shared with me that he has been blessed to have many strong women in his life, but nothing compares to his mother. Of note is the fact that the chancellor met with Mark in July of '24 while on a trip to Virginia. So I feel that I owe the chancellor a debt of gratitude for helping me make my numbers and for taking time to see this outstanding alum. I am also happy to give the chancellor shared credit of this gift, or at least an assist in the true Carolina Way fashion. Finally, thank you to the Board of Trustees for all of your work on behalf of this great university and the citizens of the state of North Carolina. Thank you.
Thank you, Mary Margaret. Next up, unfortunately, my colleague, Sherb Brennan, who's the Executive Director of Development for Schools and Units and works with the Ackland, is snowed in. I'm not used to that, the small amount of snow we got, but it's North Carolina. So I'm going to do it for her. So this is Grace White up on the screen. Grace is the Ackland's part-time paper conservator. She spends her days preparing sensitive art and paper, fragment pieces, while she also teaches in the classroom. As you know, the Ackland is well-known for its collection of works of art on paper. It's the largest collection in the state. We're often asked to loan these pieces to schools and museums throughout the Southeast and internationally. Grace prepares them so they'll be, go out on loan and remain in safety and intact. Her work is integral to the museum. Several years ago, a director of development, Andrew Parish, in the museum, was asked to go to a local community event and went to a retirement community. There, he met an older alumna who has never really been involved with the university. But over the last several years, he's been engaging her and talking about what the Ackland does. This year, she made a $2 million anonymous gift in honor of her husband to endow Grace's position. This will allow Grace to continue the great work that she does every day. Endowment for staff positions is pretty rare. We think of faculty and scholarships, but it's a wonderful opportunity to elevate the Ackland and its work and continue its work while it deals with its operating budget challenges. This year, Grace is teaching a chemistry course on the topic of blue dyes and pigments and the history of how they're used in the work of art. One of her students came up to her in the class recently and said, "How can I do what you do?" This gift will not only ensure that the Ackland does amazing work, supporting Grace's commitment to this important collection, but also inspire future generations. So I thought you'd hear about that. Finally, we've asked our colleague, Ann Collins, Senior Associate Dean for the College, to come and give another gift story.
Hi, good afternoon. I am Ann Collins, the Senior Associate Dean for Development in the College of Arts and Sciences. Mike, thank you for inviting me to say a few words with all of you this afternoon. I am pleased to share an exciting and impactful series of investments that Blake and Chad Pike have made to establish and sustain the Honors Carolina Go Anywhere Initiative within the College of Arts and Sciences. The Honors Carolina tagline is simple and to the point, "Come here, go anywhere." This is the promise that Honors Carolina makes to students. If you come here, you will leave prepared to follow your dreams wherever they may lead. Blake and Chad Pike, both alums of the College of Arts and Sciences, class of 1993, made an initial seven-figure investment in the Go Anywhere Initiative to launch this effort in Honors Carolina. Their goal was to ensure that Honors Carolina students are landing in positions at the very top tier of their given professions. Today, the Go Anywhere Initiative comprises a director- Today, the Go Anywhere Initiative comprises a director of alumni and career and networks, a team of eight career and professional development coaches, all of whom have worked in careers outside of academia, an innovative career development curriculum, a technology platform called the Go Anywhere Platform that was specifically developed to connect students with alumni and friends and internships and jobs, and a robust schedule of events and activities, networking receptions, time with alumni to help prepare students to launch post graduation. This is all part of the Honors Carolina Difference, a guided journey toward a successful career and a purposeful life. In 2022 and 2023, the Pikes made additional six figure expendable commitments to enhance and sustain the Go Anywhere Initiative. This fall, they made another seven figure commitment to provide expendable funding to continue the innovative, this initiative and this innovative work for the next three years, while additional funds are raised to secure the program for the long term. This initiative has really exceeded expectations across the board. This fall, there were over 5,000 internship opportunities for students on the Go Anywhere Platform. The coaches meet with students one on one. They've been averaging 115 meetings each week. Each semester, they're getting, they're doing more and more. And the students are rating the coaches at a 4.93 out of, on a 5.0 scale, which for students, I think they're, they're very honest in their feedbacks. So that, that speaks volumes for the work that's happening on the ground. This impact has also been felt beyond Honors Carolina, and that was always the intention to develop a model and pieces that could be taken to scale for the benefit of the College of Arts and Sciences and the university as a whole. No honors program or college in the country provides resources comparable to the Go Anywhere Initiative. Jim LaLutis, Todd Ballinger, and the entire Honors Carolina team have done extraordinary work. It's been very focused on data from the beginning, and that's been an important piece for, for the Pikes and for other donors who have stepped forward to support this. The Go Anywhere Initiative presents an unparalleled opportunity to invest in results driven innovation that has proven capacity to position Carolina now and in the future as a national leader. As the Pikes like to say, it's all about Carolina people helping Carolina people. So thank you to all of you for helping Carolina people across the state and around the world.
Thank you, Mary Margaret, and thank you, Anne. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. Does anyone have any comments or questions for Mike?
Just real quick, I, I want to compliment Anne on that, that report on what you're doing at Honors. I, I was not an Honors student when I was here, to be clear, but I have learned a lot about the program. I think it is a fantastic thing, and we are so lucky to have folks like the Pikes willing to put their money where their mouth is and supporting it. And I really think it's a great thing that everybody ought to pay attention to. So thank you.
Thank you.
Now, I have one, I'm just curious, of the 340 people that you uncovered to make, I think it was a hundred thousand dollar gift, are any of those going to be one of the 45 volunteers?
No, the ones that are coming in the spring, the ones that are coming in the spring, we know them very well, and they've served in many different roles. These are relatively new. We've maybe had only one conversation, and there's about, I'll have to ask Jeff, he knows the data, but I think there's about eighty additional folks that we thought could give at that level, but they made it clear that was probably more than what they could do. So the qualification process is to not only determine respectfully whether they have that capacity and whether they have the interest to do so, or they're unable to do so. We have a lot more of that work to do, thousands over the next five or six years.
Thanks. Ralph?
Wonderful. Thank you.
All right, thank you. So thank you, everyone, for your updates. I believe this concludes our open session items for today. Trustee Valentine will now entertain a motion to go into closed session.
Madam Chairwoman, I move that the External Relations Committee go into closed session pursuant to North Carolina General Statute, Section 143, 318.11a1, to prevent the disclosure of privileged or confidential information, and also pursuant to Section 143, 318, 11a2.
You heard the motion. Now, now have a second. Thank you, trustee Katus. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All right, we'll go into closed session.
Hearing none, seeing none, I'll ask Chris McClure to please call the roll.
Chair Jones?
Here.
Vice Chair Lloyd?
Here.
Mr. Valentine?
Here.
Mr. Bryan?
Here.
Mr. Kalapa? Mr. Patel?
Prior?
Here.
Mr. Taylor?
Here.
Mr. Turner? Chairman, you have a call.
Thank you. Our first item of business is to review and approve the open and closed session minutes of the November 6, 2024 meeting. So everyone had a chance to review those minutes, believing yes to be the case. Do I hear a motion to approve the open and closed session minutes of November 6, 2024? May I get a second?
Second.
Any discussion, debate? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, seeing none, the motion carries. Our second item is to review and approve three requests for discontinuation of centers. Provost Chris Clemens is here to present this item.
Thank you, Chair Jones. I shall be very brief. We've done this before. We have a Centers and Institutes Review Committee. From time to time, we find centers and institutes that are not functioning as pan campus entities. They may be living in a single department, they may have changed their mission, and we're here with three such centers and institutes today to have them decommissioned. The committee has recommended it, I have approved it, Chancellor Roberts has approved it. You've got the materials, the three in question are the Center for Urban and Regional Studies, which was living in a single department in the college. That department is continuing that work. They don't need a center to do that because it's all within one department. The other two are in the med school, the McAllister Heart Institute and the UNC Blood Research Center. Same story, both of those were initially thought to be something of scope that would touch multiple departments and across the campus. They've both kind of evolved into things that are within a single department. The med school has asked us to have them reviewed. The committee has reviewed them and recommended they be discontinued. And so you have recommendation for all three at once to have them removed as centers. That doesn't mean the work of the centers will go away, and in some cases, the center will continue in the department under, under the same name, but it won't be something that we manage through that committee or that reports up centrally to either the provost or the vice chancellor for research. Happy to take questions.
Thank you. Does anyone have any questions for the provost? Hearing none, seeing none, may I hear a motion to approve the discontinuation request? May I get a second?
Second.
Discussion or debate? Hearing none, seeing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. These items will be placed on the consent agenda for the full board's approval tomorrow. Our next item is a report on the request for authorization to plan the Winston National Center for Technology, Brain, and Psychological Development. Provost Chris Clemens is here to present this item. Provost Clemens?
Thank you. Despite our vigor in shutting down centers and institutes, we are, you know, still very happy to make new ones when, when it's important that we do that. We have brought you one recently that you approved. This is a center that was started by a donor who came with great concerns about the corrosive effects of social media and digital media use in young people. When he approached our faculty, I was actually Senior Associate Dean at the time, they said, well, the data so far don't show any deleterious effects. And I said, common sense says this is something maybe where we need more data. They started a center, it has gotten some very prominent national media attention. It's right now in psychology and neuroscience, so within a department, but it's very clear that we do this work all over campus. And so the idea here is to elevate it so that it reports to the vice chancellor for research to give it more administrative help so that the scientists don't have to run the center but can do the work. And we have two very fine members of that department who will continue work in the center. And so what we're asking is the first step in a two step process. We are, we are in the authorization to plan request. This is part one, and it, and it doesn't require your approval. This is just a notification. And then the second step will be to come back once that plan is written with a request to establish, and we hope to do that very quickly because the, the donors are interested in seeing this center have a little more pan campus reach. So that, you've got the materials, you can read about it yourself. Happy to take questions about that one as well.
Does anyone have any questions?
This is, this is the Winston's that came and presented to us on this.
It is. You, you saw a presentation on the work and maybe some of the.
Why didn't you reference that?
What's that?
Why didn't you reference that? They came and presented, that's.
I forgot. I, I see a lot of stuff, and I can't remember who did what when. But yes, you did see a presentation on this. Thank you, thank you for reminding me in my age and dotage that I'm forgetting how, what happens and when.
But you showed such remarkable foresight on predicting the ill effects of social media when you were Senior Associate Dean, so congratulations.
In hindsight, I did show foresight. That's how it works.
Does anyone else have any questions for the provost? I, I think this is very timely. I think this is something that's of incredible importance to our society and our young people. Thank you. Our next informational item today is to hear a presentation from Student Body President Julia Taylor and Dean of Students Desiree Rickenberg on food insecurity and the supporting programs at UNC. Trustee Taylor and Ms. Rickenberg.
Hi, and good afternoon, members of the Board of Trustees and the public. I'd like to start by recognizing two key individuals whose leadership and support have been instrumental in our efforts to address food insecurity on campus, Dean Rickenberg and Vice Chancellor Johnson. Over the past year, we have been working collaboratively to sure, to ensure that all students have access to the resources they need to thrive. The Dean of Students office has been pivotal in expanding access to critical resources and support systems, and their commitment has made a tangible difference in the lives of our students. Today, I'm excited to share the progress we've made and highlight the ways we can continue building a more equitable campus together. Next, I will pass it on to Dean Rickenberg.
Thank you, Julia, and thank you for having us here today to talk a little bit about just one area of student support that our office has been working with students, specifically our Student Body President and Student Government Leaders, to be able to implement over the course of this last year. For those of you who I do not know, my name is Desiree Rickenberg, and I serve as the Dean of Students. I've been the, I've been in the Dean of Students office and at UNC now for almost thirteen years, and part of my role is to be able to think about how we serve and support students and help them be able to reach their student success goals. And so our office plays a critical role in, in their academic and personal success. And so as we help students navigate their experience here, one of the things we do recognize is that our students are coming from multi varied backgrounds and with different experiences, different levels of education, but all of them are superiorly qualified to be students at Carolina. And so what we wanted to be able to do is highlight this one specific space that, that is oftentimes something that lives in kind of a shadow space. And so to be able to do that, I want to be able to give you some definitions and just a little bit of information that kind of sets the stage for really the wonderful, outstanding work that our students have been doing to, to lead and to be able to ensure that, that we have something that is sustainable and maximizes our resources. There we go. So when we think about food security, want to be able to make sure folks are kind of starting off with a level playing field around what it is and how we define it. And so I didn't make up the definition. There are, there are many different definitions that you might see out there, but the most standard definition that is out there actually comes from the USDA. And we want to be able to, to provide this as context because our students have done some really good research that you're going to hear a little bit about later, but this is where it kind of starts. Food security really comes down to access by all people at all times to enough food for an active and healthy life. And then there are these certain, these questions that the USDA has put together to be able to, to drive research that is happening at the federal government level, but is also happening across the country and in colleges and universities, just like ours. We have ongoing research that's been going on the Gilling School of Public Health, as well as our student government partners, that's really drilling down into what this means for our college campuses, because this is not just a societal issue, this is a part of our campus issue, and something that campuses across the country are working to be able to address. Some of the national trends that are out there, again, we put the definition of food secure, but the food insecure pieces, which is where some of this work is kind of being driven from, the data would indicate that when we look at the, when we look at the numbers, we've got about 13.5% of US households reported as food insecure during 2023. And so if you look at the, the chart, that top line, we want to break it down into two pieces. The top line represents food insecurity, and then the bottom line represents very low food insecurity. And so of the 13.5% of folks who indicated that they experienced food insecurity in their household, the percentage breakdown is 8.4% of US households report having low food insecurity, which amounts to about 11.2 million, and 5.1% or 6.8 million households represented indicate that they have very low food insecurity at some time during the 2023 year. And so I want to be able to emphasize, as we look at the definitions and look at the numbers, there can be a lot of different variation, a lot of different room for interpretation as folks are completing these surveys, how they interpret the question household, how they may interpret the question, active, healthy lifestyle, all of those things provide some subjectivity. But at the root of what we're trying to show is that nationally, food insecurity is something that is impacting our communities and our Carolina community is, is not, is not excluded from that space. We actually have local data that, that shows us in, in the last year, we've conducted a number of surveys to be able to dig into this a little bit better. What you'll see is the data varies, right? So when we ask specific questions, you look at the different response rates, our, our data, whether you're thinking of the Healthy Mind Survey from Fall 2022, or National College Health Assessment Survey data from Fall 2023, we also have another survey that's not up there that we've been partnering with, and actually has been led out of our, our partners enrollment with Trellis Strategies to look at financial wellness. All, all of our data would indicate that there's something going on here, but it, it shows us data from about 14% of our students have indicated either sometimes or often they are impacted by food security concerns, all the way up to numbers as high as this last fall at 34.5% indicating that they experienced some type of low food security. And that's a significant increase when we look at data that was last collected back in spring 2022. So again, showing you some variation in the data, but really emphasizing that this is something that we want to be able to support our students and recognize that, you know, one of the things I frequently say, you, you have to be well to do well. And so part of being well is knowing that you have a healthy meal in front of you, and you have a roof over your head, and that, that your basic needs are taken care of. So as we think about how we want to be able to approach this effort, again, this is not just me, it's not just Julia, it's a whole campus partnership and a community partnership as well. But what we did look at is we need to be able to figure out what's going on on our campus because we're not in a space where we have unlimited resources to go out and just create things, new positions, new, new resources, new, all the things. And so we know our campus is doing a lot of really great work. And so under the leadership of Vice Chancellor Johnson and our Vice Provost for Enrollment, Rachel Feldman, they charged a basic needs task force. And then we also created a subgroup specifically looking at food security. And so what I want to be able to do, I can go, I could go through, it's been lots of time with you talking about what that, that, that task force came out of when it comes to food security, but I want to really specifically talk about what the, what we've been doing. And so to start off with, one of the, the major, major evolutions is within our Carolina Pantry Network. is within our Carolina Pantry Network. Food pantries have been popping up across the country at different colleges and universities, and UNC is, is definitely a part of that group. The system has a number of our sister institutions, a majority of our sister institutions also have some pantry work. What's unique about ours is we decided that we wanted to be able to, to grow the work that our students have been doing. So a lot of pantries automatically started with an administrative lead. We decided that we wanted to be able to, to, to not recreate the wheel, but be able to grow and enhance it. So we looked to our students who, long before we were at the table, decided we need a food pantry. So the Carolina Cupboard students have been integral in being able to say, you know, we're going to be the, the hub for what we're calling our network. And then we are bringing food to where people are. We recognize that there are different reasons why folks may want to be able to, be able to, to seek out different satellites. And so what we've done this year is actually create the hub, which is in SASB, Student Academic Services North Building, adjacent to the Dean of Students Office. And now we have satellite pantries in academic schools that are partnering with us to be able to, again, kind of bring food to where students are, to make it accessible, and to ultimately be able to connect that to other student success initiatives that are going on within the university and the academic work that's happening. And so what we're going to be doing over the course of this next year is really evaluating that work and being able to, to determine what is the longer term sustainable model for food pantries on campus, and to be able to, to do that in partnership with a community, because our community has a wonderful network of supports and services that address food security as well. The second initiative that has existed and that we wanted to just be able to raise some awareness around was the edible campus. When we started talking to students, many students didn't even realize that edible campus was something that even existed. And they definitely didn't realize that they too can take from these campus gardens. So in partnership with the North Carolina Botanical Gardens, there are nine gardens that are interspersed all throughout the community. The largest one is behind Davis Library, and they grow food for the community. It's a really fantastic opportunity. They do this year round. They had, they grow things in the winter that I didn't even know that you could grow in the winter. And where my, my garden is all dead and gone, they've got live things that, that people are harvesting as we speak. And so we really want to be able to emphasize that this is something that students can access. They can actually also learn in this process too. So again, this academic connections are really pretty cool, to be able to integrate academic pieces with the student support options that are out there to address food security. I could not do this work without partners in Carolina Dining, and want to just really be able to name them as a, as a partner, and a significant partner. I have worked at five different universities across the country, large public universities, and I have not seen the kind of commitment from our dining services anywhere else. And so they worked hard before we even came to the table to say, we know we're going to integrate this into our, our campus dining contract. They're funding to be able to help student-led initiatives. They also have donated meal plans, as well as just individual meals that help us be able to, help be able to serve individual students. They also have some of their additional foods that they donate to our campus pantries as well. So that when we're thinking about how do we share resources, how do we maximize what we have, Carolina Dining has been a central partner in being able to, to maximize our resources and to also be able to add into some guarantees into their contracts. And so we really appreciate their partnership, both the current leadership and previous leadership as well. And then my office, as the Dean of Students, we, we serve as kind of a central point for, for students who, who may have any manner of, of need or concern. We're a central referral point. We are leading the Carolina Food Pantry Network. We are co-chairing the Basic Needs Task Force along with Associate Provost, Jack, Associate Provost and the Director of our Office of Scholarships and Student Aid, Jackie Copeland. Together, she and I are going to be continuing the work of being able to, to examine what basic needs on our campus look like, and what we need to be doing to support students so that they can ultimately be healthy and successful students that represent us well. And so that brings us to the, the, I guess, the, the centerpiece of our conversation and really the, I would say, the centerpiece initiative that our students have been kind of tapping at my shoulder, tapping at a number of shoulders across campus to say, there's, there's this other thing. There's some more things that we need to be looking at doing. And again, in the, in the mindset of serving and supporting students and maximizing utilizing resources that exist. And so this whole notion that students are really a driving force and how we help students and how they want to also give back to their communities. And so back in 2000, this last, I guess this last year, say back in, it's, it's not that long ago. But our student government leaders who are behind me today actually stood in front and said, we want to be able to prioritize a program that lets us donate things that we already have to our fellow students. And so we are in the process of, and you'll hear a little bit more about them and how we got to this point of implementing a meal swipe donation program where students are giving to students. And so I want to be able to turn it over to, to Julia and her team. Again, part of my work is not only to support students, but also to lift up student ideas and partner with them to be able to, to solve some of the biggest challenges that are facing our students and communities. So Julia, I think you're up.
Thank you so much for that wonderful presentation. And I've spoke to a few of you all about the potential of doing a meal swipe donation plan, but I'm really excited to share with you all the plan and kind of how we came about this being a great plan to tackle food insecurity. So I'm going to pass it off to one of my, two of my colleagues, the first one being Sydney Curtis, and I'll let her introduce herself, but she's going to provide more of the context of food insecurity at UNC.
Hi, everyone. I'll briefly introduce myself. So my name is Sydney Curtis. For the past six years, I've served as a public health advocate, CPR instructor, and public and healthy cooking demonstrator for the American Heart Association, which has kind of led me to being in the Food Security Committee with Ella Howie and Julia Taylor. I'm also a senior, double majoring in political science and journalism with a minor in data science. So first, I'll just reiterate a few of the, first I'll reiterate a few of the definitions that we saw earlier. Food insecurity is a lack of consistent access to food, but also lack of consistent access to healthy foods as well. So those that are eating chips or candies primarily, those are also people that are food insecure. Those that are shortening their meals because they need to save some for later are food insecure, and those that are unable to purchase food in the first place are food insecure. So it's a kind of scope, shorten the scope into that of students. In the context of a student, food insecurity is a psychosocial stressor that can impact academic performance. And for a study developed by the National Institute of Health, their studies found that there is a positive correlation with being food insecure in academic performance. So those that did have food and healthy foods at home were able to perform well in the classroom and had higher GPAs. So next, I'll turn it over to Ella Howie. She can discuss some of the studies that we found on UNC's campus.
Hi, Trustees. My name is Ella. I'm currently a senior at Chapel Hill, majoring in Environmental Studies. Aside from being a student of government with Julia, I'm just a person passionate about food security and helping our campus. So we did a survey launched in September last semester, so it's fairly recent. We got 500 results, which was quite a big accomplishment for us, considering we had like a three-month timeframe. We ended it in December. It's a really good idea to see locally what's happening with a random sample. And there's a lot of different ideas that we got from it. But here's some of the results where we found 32% of respondents struggled with food insecurity at UNC, and 59% know of someone who struggled. I personally, freshman year, had a hard time with food insecurity because I didn't have my car on campus, and also the walkability to a grocery store is a little bit hard with Target being one of the only grocery stores available. Many students do not run out of meal swipes by the end of the semester, which is why I believe the meal swipe donation plan would work really well. 96% of respondents supported giving their leftover swipes to the donation program, and 44% of respondents would be in favor of being a recipient. It just, there's this gap between these two people, and I feel like if we could address it with this program, it would help everyone. 54% of respondents know of existing food insecurity programs. That was another really interesting takeaway we had from this, that programs are in place, but they do need more promotion and support. And so alongside promoting this whole meal swipe donation program, we aim to increase the awareness of existing resources and expanding support for them. And so the second part of our survey also addressed more of a free response section of what students are currently doing. 54% never run out and 11% run out before the end of the semester. This is also just going to address that gap, and it would be decreased with the use of a meal swipe donation program. And so we also heard students swipe in their friends, and this is fairly consistent, as 34% of them acknowledge this, and 36% of them do nothing with their leftover swipes. This is some of the free response we got. So obviously, some people have, just make lots of peanut butter and jellies, others eat once a day and try to maximize what, what money they have, or buying microwaveable food at the supermarket, which isn't necessarily the health, healthy option, or just asking friends for guest swipes. All of these were kind of pretty competitive in the responses we've got. And so now I'll pass it to Julia to talk about what partner institutions are doing.
Thank you, Ella. Okay, so let me walk you through the meal swipe donation plan. This program would, like you've heard, allow students to donate their unused meal swipes to fellow students facing food insecurity. So why does UNC need this plan and how exactly would it work? Well, the data is pretty compelling. We've seen a high usage rates of the current 500 meal swipes offered by the Dean of Students Office. Our survey also showed that 96% of students would donate their swipes to help others. Plus, our peer institutions like North Carolina State and UNC Charlotte have already implemented programs successfully. And most importantly, this addresses a clear need that both donors and recipients support. So how does this work at ECU? Well, at East Carolina University, they already have a meal swipe donation plan. They've created a partnership between student government, campus dining, and the Purple Pantry Network. Student government promotes their program at, at the start of the semester, and students donate through the Get Mobile app, which is what UNC Chapel Hill also uses. And then the Purple Pantry manages distribution from an online form. And then at UNC Charlotte, students can donate swipes through the Niners Diners mobile app during Homeless Awareness Week in November. This program limits donations to one swipe per transaction, but students can make multiple donations. Students with block plans can check their balance online, while those on a daily plan need to wait at least 15 minutes before uses. So before we close, I'd like to thank everyone who's made a system like this possible, including Vice Chancellor Johnson, Dean Rickenberg, Kristi Hurt, Associate Vice Chancellor Merklin, Associate Vice Provost of Scholarships and Student Aid, Jackie Copeland, and last but not least, Kristen Flowers of Carolina Dining Services. Please join us in promoting food insecurity resources and donating swipes to those in need, which is a partnership between student government.
CDS.
Dean of Students.
And the campus community.
And we would love to take any questions. We can answer these ourselves or lean on the dean for help.
Thank you for all coming here today and informing everyone about this program. Does anyone have any questions? I think Trustee White and then Trustee Curtis.
Yeah. Thank you, ladies. That was a great presentation and good idea. I think what you were doing is great. My question maybe is more for Desiree. I, or maybe, because was it your office that conducted the survey? The surveys with all the percentages that you're getting?
So we are, so we didn't necessarily conduct the surveys ourselves, but they are campus surveys that are conducted through partners across campus. Yeah.
So I guess my question is, is it on campus? So when people are saying they're experiencing and food insecurities, they're, they're, do the questions allow for while they're on campus?
Yes.
On UNC's campus?
Yes.
And then help me understand what it means to run out of food swipes. Is that, is that going to Chick-fil-A, or is that going upstairs to Lenore? I mean, how does that work? And then how does, what percentage do we know of these people that are experiencing food insecurity or are receiving financial aid? And how does that work?
All really great questions. And the last question is something that we can definitely get back to, and so I can get the exact numbers for you. But I think one of the pieces that we, we talk about, we talk about that, that data, and I don't know, Julie, if you want to be able to talk a little bit to the trustee's question, but I, when we're looking at, at the meal swipe program, the reality is, is that students have options. Not every student is required to have a meal plan. And so if you're not required to have a meal plan, they have to make discrete choices based upon the financial aid that they receive, or perhaps the, the financial support that they may be receiving in other places. And so for some students, they know that they may need a meal plan, but they opt into the lowest priced one because that's what they can afford, or that's the one that they want to be able to use to manage how they're going to be able to eat. And there are some students who don't have a meal plan at all. They, they know that their expenses and the way that they need to be able to, to navigate their basic needs does not involve a meal plan. They may have dietary concerns, they may have specific other financial expectations. And so this meal plan program really allows for students who have that resource. And oftentimes, it's the students who have it at maybe a higher level, an abundance, if you will, who are looking at the end of the semester, sometimes the end of the year, and saying, I'm not going to use any of these. And so then, how do we be able to, again, take a resource that students have already paid for and have a commitment to being able to give back to their communities? And so the cool thing about this is we recognize that students aren't just paying for them all by themselves. Oftentimes, there are parents and families that are also paying for their program. And we have a significant amount of support from parents who are also saying that this is something we'd love to be able to, and we're already doing this. And so how can we help contribute? So this is another opportunity to, again, take a resource and give back.
And I, and I fully agree that if you have extra gift, I think maybe what I'm, maybe I should refer to the question. I'm still trying to understand how you could have a meal plan, or I didn't know you were not required to have one, but I get that, or, and then have food insecurity. Like, are we allowing, or is our mere meal plan system planned the right way?
Could you repeat the last part of your question?
I guess what I'm saying is, should we be looking into how we give out meal plans?
Yeah, definitely.
Or allocate, I guess.
Definitely. So currently, the Dean of Students Office already has 500 meal swipes allotted to students. And so what that looks like for students is they'll go to the Dean of Students website and either contact the Dean of Students Office and see if they can get that meal plan, meal swipe allocated to their account. But what this program would do is, if students don't feel comfortable contacting the Dean of Students Office, then they'd be able to go into the Get app and request a meal swipe, and that would be distributed to them via the app.
I think that the broader question just around meal plans, the, the variety of meal plans that are offered, there's a lot of time and energy that goes into being able to determine what the different offerings are going to be. And a lot of that is based upon feedback from the Carolina Dining Board that says, this is the way we need to be able to offer, and this is the number and types of meal plans that, that are there. So it's very systemic, and it's very intentional. And so I don't know that it's so much of an issue around, are we offering the right types of meal plans? We offer a lot of different variety, everything from declining balance, you can put just money on it, and you can buy things, to set numbers of meals per week. So we have a lot of different variety. I think the reality is, is that, that even with that number of variety, they still come with a cost that some students choose, and some students choose to not opt into being able to purchase those meal plans at that cost.
Quickly, Trustee Curtis and then Trustee Ballantyne.
I think it's a great idea. And Trustee Taylor, thanks for pushing this forward. You've been a great advocate for it, along with your colleagues. Something else you may want to consider is a meal swipe donation program for donors that could contribute to the program outside of students having to support other students as well, that we could maybe put in the food halls, or venues, or bookstore, where people could contribute, you know, Venmo in a swipe, or something like that. And then also, to kind of piggyback off Trustee White's comments, you know, getting them signed up for the right meal plan, but maybe also nutrition, meal planning, and fiscally responsible training so that they don't run out of money, which can be a large part of it, too. Using things like Rocket Mail or other solutions. I think, you know, offering this is great, but also teaching the students to be self-sufficient, as well as another key component of it.
Yeah. Thank you, Trustee Curtis. I think those are two really great points, especially the first point about having alumni or people outside of the Carolina community being able to donate. I think we already saw that with the Pantry Bowl that we hosted back in November, UNC between NC State. A lot of those people that were donating were not even UNC students or UNC alum, but they were actually, you know, my family members who didn't even go to Carolina. So there's a lot of people that really want to buy into supporting students, especially when it comes to food insecurity on campus. And then to your second point about really just supporting students and making sure that they have the financial resources to be equipped to budget, I think we can really lean on our Financial Wellbeing Center, which is new to campus last year, and I think that'd be. And I think that'd be a great opportunity. So we'll definitely look into both of those.
Is, is the Financial Aid Office involved with this? I mean, to me, if you're on free and reduced lunch in high school and all throughout your schooling, it's a pretty good prediction that you're gonna have food insecurity if you get off that, right? So can that not be a part of, can that not be a part of program where, you know, we've got the Carolina Covenant? We're trying to help these students come to Carolina and.
Books intuition, but I mean, are they not getting them, can we not give them a meal plan if we already know that they don't have the means?
So, Trustee Valentine, first of all, Desiree mentioned that Jackie Copeland, who's our Associate Provost of Scholarships and Student Aid, is a partner on all of this work. And so they've been involved in it all together. The student aid budgets include enough for an unlimited meal plan. So as you know, students have the option to opt in or out of any plan they might choose. And sometimes there are pressures on students that we don't know about from home that might make them spend their money differently. Sometimes there are, you know, just unforeseen circumstances, and they don't always come to us for the help they might want. Part of the beauty of this program is it's students helping other students, so it doesn't count as their financial aid in any kind of way, and it doesn't disturb other things. But I assure you, we're always looking at whether or not what we're doing is both within the law and sufficient for student needs and welcome students who are struggling to come in and get help. Our other hope is the Financial Wellness Center, which we just started with your support last year and in partnership with our friends in Student Affairs, will not only teach students financial literacy and enable them to make better budgeting choices, but also help address basic needs issues on the campus. Because as Desiree mentioned, students come from all kinds of different backgrounds. And you'd be surprised, sometimes the people who run out of money for food aren't necessarily the lowest income people. But I assure you, we're looking at it from all of those angles. And I feel like, Trustee White, you were trying to ask a little bit about that, too, like, why are these students hungry? And it's just a really complicated question with a lot of personal choices involved.
Thank you again for sharing this information. And please don't hesitate to come back and let us know how we can be supportive of this effort going forward. Our final informational item is to hear from Chancellor Roberts on the university's priorities for 2025. Chancellor Roberts?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Let me add my thanks to Dean Rickenberg and to Ms. Howie and Ms. Curtis. Appreciate your involvement with this. And to Trustee Taylor, this is like a case study on how to be an involved and effective student representative on the board, as well as an effective SGA president. So thank you very much. This next slide, maybe somebody has the clicker. Thank you, Trustee Blaine. If I can work the next slide. Here we go. So this slide, I've taken, I think, everyone through this individually, and it's more of a working document than a, a presentation document. But the purpose of it is to outline how we think about our strategic objectives. And as, as you all know, at the top is the, the macro view, that Carolina is the beacon, our focus on being the number one public university in America. We owe you a proposal for comparative data, how we plan to benchmark ourselves against peer institutions. We don't want to be at the mercy of US News and World Report, but we do want to put rigor and data behind, behind saying that we're number one. We don't just want to say it as a marketing slogan. And so working with the provost and others, we're going to come up with a, a scorecard to this, to this effect. What does it take to be what, number one? What are our goals for the metrics that, that matter? And we'll come back to you on that. And then in the middle tier here are six strategic priorities. Four of them are the, the first four are the, the working groups on which many of you served that updated the strategic plan. Each one of those working groups reported back at the beginning of August, as you know, or in the implementation and execution phase for each one. It looks a little bit different for each one of those, but execution work ongoing. And then also, I'm sorry, I said the first four. The, the enrollment, engineering, physical master plan, and AI were the working groups. And then athletics and skill round out the six areas of strategic focus. And the first four are ones that have implications for Carolina North. And then the bottom, the bottom tier is our operational initiatives, some of which tie back to the strategic effort, and some are just efforts to improve our, our operations, not necessarily in a strategic context, but more tactically. And so as we think about the, the conversations with the board over the remainder of the year, what we've tried to do is divide these into five buckets. And our proposal is to spend each of the remaining board meetings that we have this year, the five remaining board meetings, talking in depth about one of the, the five. And I'm going to, to mention each of the five briefly. So the first here is research excellence. And we'll talk a little bit more today about the translational research building. The most important topic here are the investments in artificial intelligence. Clearly, a lot of interest on the board in this topic, an important strategic priority for us. And our proposal is at the next board meeting, at the March meeting, we'll, we'll talk about our AI strategy in depth. We, we, we view that in four buckets. Our research strategy, which is what we'll spend most of our time talking about, but also how we can use AI internally, operationally, to make the enterprise run more effectively. How do we deploy it in the classroom for students who are interested in computer science and data science, studying those fields? And then how do we deploy it in the classroom for everybody else? For students who are not focused on data science or computer science per se, but how do we raise the minimum level of adoption of, of this technology across our, across our curriculum? The provost has taken important steps in that regard. So the March meeting to talk about our, all of these research topics and with a particular focus on, on AI. And then at the next meeting, in the May meeting, to talk about student success and campus safety. As you know, we've had a series of initiatives underway in this area, some of which predate my, my time. The significant upgrade of the Career Services effort is an important example of that. We're, we're trying hard to create more, a more seamless student life experience. So right now, as a student, in order to, you have to know a lot about our org chart as a student to navigate Carolina, to navigate Carolina's administration, and would like to, to reduce that friction so that we have student success broadly defined under, insofar as possible, to be housed in, in one place and, and put the burden on us as administrators to figure out where a student needs to go, rather than the student have to figure out the right place within our large, complex, decentralized organization. Part of that has been a, a review of how we provide campus health. We've already realigned student housing, as I think you, you all know. The threat assessment work that followed the shooting in August of, August, in, in August 2023 has been completed, significant upgrades underway in campus safety, important initiatives taken in that regard already. One recent example is just yesterday, we learned that the, the, the robberies that took place around Granville, arrests were made in, in those cases. And the license plate readers that were installed on campus made a meaningful difference to, to pursuing those, those perpetrators. So Trustee Curtis has been a vigorous advocate of the license plate readers. They've, they're installed now and are paying benefits. And it's great to have a recent tangible example of that. And then we've talked a lot about our, our interest in upgrading our student wellness and rec facilities. And we have a funding plan to do that. And we'll, we'll talk more about that as, as part of this dive as well. And so then our thought is that at the July meeting, we'll, we'll talk about athletics. And that includes a, a range of topics. Obviously, a heightened focus on revenue generation, sponsorships, marketing, our plans for the basketball arena. Obviously, football will continue to be a, a high-profile topic. And then issues around conference revenue distribution and, and also within the conference, the discussions around renewal of the television contract, which will have taken place by then. And if there are other topics that folks want to discuss as we talk about athletics more generally, I would hope that we would have guidance from the Department of Education about the, the way Title IX intersects with our revenue share responsibilities under the House settlement. We'll be well into implementation of the House settlement if it stays on, on the current timetable by that time. And then by the September meeting, to talk about all, all aspects of campus development, including the, the work on the physical master plan. We've talked about our, our restructuring of how we run our various arts functions on campus, building out our marketing effort. We have a, a new head of marketing starting on February 17th as part of our effort to, to, to have a marketing function, which we haven't really had in a centralized way previously. Our progress on enterprise risk management, which, as you know, has been centralized within the, the general counsel's function, but which is, the, the buildout of which continues to, to be ongoing. And then our continued focus on fiscal responsibility. And then for the final meeting of the year in November, so these topics will flow through all of the board meetings of the year, enrollment growth, engineering, skill, and the development of Carolina North. So it's not as though we won't be talking about them between now and November. Really planning to use that November board meeting to talk about what 2026 will look like as it relates to these four crucial strategic initiatives. Not, not that we won't be talking about them between now and then. I, I think we'll be talking about them frequently, but making sure that we use our time at the end of the year to talk about what our priorities will be along these lines for the, for the coming year. So that's a quick overview of both of what our plan is for speaking with the board about these strategic initiatives, as well as a, a, a very rapid overview of the initiatives that we, we have underway. Happy to answer questions about any of that, either in, in the setting or during the, the full session tomorrow.
Thank you for that, the outline of your vision for this upcoming year. Does anyone have any questions for the chancellor? Trustee Blaine?
Chancellor Roberts, a couple of questions, mostly one substantive and then mostly just logistical. Would the advising program fit in the student success piece? Okay, I'd be interested in hearing something about that.
Just to be clear, when you say advising program, you mean undergraduate advising or the college advising corps?
Undergraduate advising. And then in particular, in the context of trying to increase our graduation rates and trying to get people that have come, been a while and haven't been here to come back. I'd be very interested in hearing something about that. And then the second question I have is just, this is the first time I've seen anybody lay out a work plan. I think it's great. Thank you for that. I'd be very curious personally, and I'm sure the rest of the board would be too, to know how we can get engaged with this ahead of time, either in places we're interested in or probably, that would probably be how we think about it, probably how you think about it, is places where we can actually help. Are there areas of need? You know, in particular, I think Trustee Taylor and I were speaking earlier today. I think it would be really helpful to have some conversations about the possibility of Carolina getting authorized to, you know, provide students with the option of pursuing some degrees in engineering in the near term. I think that, that is something that, at least from what I understand, students are interested in. It's something that we don't have the capacity to provide right now. And then the second thing, too, is if there's anything we can do in the short term to push forward increased enrollment for next year, I really think we should do it. I think as the enrollment group has pointed out, and as you've discussed often, today, we're only serving, what, two or two and a half percent of all high school graduates in the state? 20, 30 years ago, we were serving four to 5% of all high school graduates. It's hard to be the University of the People if we aren't serving very many people. And I think it's really time for us to be aggressively thinking about how we provide the benefits of an education at Chapel Hill to more of the people of North Carolina. So I would be really interested in, you know, if we could have some accelerated discussions on some of the things that I see on the November slide. But really appreciate you putting this forward.
Yeah, thank you, Trustee Blaine. We welcome trustee involvement in, obviously, in all of these topics. That's why we ask trustees to serve on the, on the working groups around physical master plan, enrollment growth, engineering, and artificial intelligence. I think there's a particular trustee interest on the second and third topics. That's the student success bucket and the athletics budget. But we welcome trustee involvement, really, in, in, in all of these areas. Everyone's got relevant expertise in, in different fields that, that we, we don't just welcome, we, we need to be as effective as possible. With respect to enrollment in particular, just to, just for the record, we enroll about three and a half percent of North Carolina's graduating high school seniors. It used to be about 5%. The working group recommended growing by 5,000 students over 10 years, so significant growth, but over a extended period of time. We're going to jumpstart that by adding 500 students to the incoming class that we're admitting right now. And so that's going to be an important down payment on that, on that enrollment growth. And it's not easy. There are constraints across the, across the enterprise. But so far, we haven't identified an insurmountable constraint. And so our plan right now, it's, it's a live topic, given where we are in the admission cycle, is, is, is to enroll those additional 500 students for next fall.
Thank you for that response. Trustee Curtis?
You know, this is very helpful. In addition, we've done a couple of board retreats in the past where we didn't have a structured agenda. We're able to dig into topics, take a deeper dive. A lot of times, we're rushed when we're here, it feels like. So I think it would be useful to have the board get together outside of these normal meetings, have a brainstorming facilitated meeting, get some ideas or concerns, gather them up. Otherwise, they have to happen and us chatting, you know, outside of this or telephone calls. So I think it would be good to have a, a one-day or two-day structured meeting somewhere where we have facilitator and we, we can take a deeper dive and not have all the routine approvals.
You and I discussed that, Trustee Curtis. I, I, I agree. It could be worthwhile. I discussed it with Mr. McClure. If the, if the board's interested in doing that, we'd be happy to facilitate it.
Chancellor Roberts, yeah, it seems like now would be a good time to maybe approach the legislature about allowing us to increase our number. Chancellor Roberts, yes, it seems like now would be a good time to maybe approach the legislature about allowing us to increase our number of out of state students if we're going to increase the number of our students. That's just a thought. Don't know if there's any planning to do that or not.
Certainly a discussion to to be had.
Does anyone have any other questions for chancellor Roberts?
Hearing none.
I'll ask one more question.
Yes, sir.
I I do think, you know, for the board members, that if you have things that are not on this list that you want to see gone through, like clearly now is the time to either raise them publicly or privately with the chancellor, because if we're going to have a rolling work plan, it's going to be hard to add new stuff to it as we go.
Thank you. That would be helpful.
Well, I mean, personally, speaking personally, I mean, I think the the beauty of this list is that it really reflects a lot of the discussions that we've had, you know, privately, publicly, over the last however many years. I think, you know, I mean, I agree that if there's anything that should be added, we should certainly talk and discuss it, but um I mean, it's really refreshing to see that list put forward because it really does reflect a lot of the conversations that we've had over the last however many years.
Any other questions or comments for the chancellor? Hearing none, seeing none. That concludes our open session items. I now entertain a motion to go into closed session.
Mr. Chairman, I made the University Affairs Committee go into closed session pursuant to North Carolina General Statute, section 14331811A. One, to prevent the disclosure of privileged or confidential information, and also pursuant to section 14331811A3, A5, and A6.
You heard the motion. Do I have a second? Any discussion or debate? All papers say aye. We are in closed session.
First item of business is the approval of open session meeting minutes from November 6th. Do I hear a motion to approve the open session minutes from November 6th?
So moved. Trustee White and trustee Blaine, second. Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Fourth item is business considered to design approval request for the translational research building and Bernard Street Chiller Plant. Executive Director of Facilities and Planning Design, University Architect Evan Yaskey is here to present the item. Mr. Yaskey? Or Salzy?
Luckily, I'm not the one doing that. Chairman Cottis, Mr. Yaskey had to leave, but we have our director of planning. He's an architect as well. Chris Johnson will be presenting these two designs.
Thank you.
Thank you. So we're going to be presenting two projects today, the first of which is the design for the translational research building on campus, which was designed, has been designed at Lord X Sergeant, an architecture firm out of Chapel Hill. This slide shows the site for the proposed translational research building. The site plan, the site selection was approved a few years back. You can see in the circle on the right, the building as shown on the the campus master plan is located in a research specific neighborhood. The translational research building is approximately the center of this image. You can see two parking decks in close proximity to the building on the right, the Cardinal and the Dogwood Deck. You can also see a few research buildings, which include the genetic medicine building, bioinformatics, and the Marsco Hall. Showing you a little bit of the context, you can see before you Marsco Hall, bioinformatics, genetic medicine building, which are all immediately adjacent or in close proximity to the TRB. The architecture that you see in terms of material form proportions all varies from other architecture in the more historic portions of campus. Another image showing the proximal location for TRB. Here you get a sense of the form. Again, it's located between the genetic medicine building on the right, bioinformatics on the left. And you also see a water tower on the left. Immediately left in the building, this cylindrical feature, and then to the rear, you see what's known as the South Chiller Plant. This is an image from the Marsco Courtyard from the north, looking to the northwest corner of the translational research building. You can see the majority of the building's facades are brick masonry, along with curtain wall glass. The northwest corner of the building, which is intended to really open up views to the to the Marsco Courtyard is decidedly mostly glazing. This is a courtyard that has been proposed between the bioinformatics building on the left and the new TRB on the right hand side of the building. This will be the primary entrance into the building. Another image from the south. This is the southern elevation. This is approximately where we're also looking at reconfiguring Mason Farm Road in the future. You can see a brick masonry facade, significant curtain wall glass. This is an image from the east side of the building. You can see again quite a bit of brick masonry. The the lower site walls are intended to shield primarily utility functions, including a generator and then a service drive up up to the right. You can also see the bioinformatics building on the far right. That's that's the end of the presentation for the translational.
Chair Prior, do you want to take these individually or as a combined?
Okay, two incredibly different projects. We'll jump into the second one. This is the Bernard Chiller Plant, also located on the southern portion of campus. It's a site that was identified on the prior campus master plan. The circle that you see is to the south of Manning Drive. It's also just to the north of Blythe Drive, across from the Bell Hall addition to the Business School. In this image, you see a black dashed rectangle. It's a little bit difficult to see on the screen. That represents the approximate balloon footprint. The red dashed shape also indicates the perimeter of of the site. You can see the numbers on the slide that indicate illustrate an approximately a 50 foot change in grade from the north to the south, sloping down towards the Business School. You can also see the five buildings from the former Odom Village Residential Development that are still on site. Those are all scheduled to be demolished beginning in the spring. This is an image of the proposed site plan. You can see that the parking area remains to the north of the now proposed chilled water plant. You can see that we've reforested quite a bit of the the site area where the former Odom Village plant, excuse me, the Odom Village residence halls once stood, and we're also proposing street trees alongside alongside Blythe Drive. Those are all intended to further screen the views from the Business School across Blythe. This will give you, this image gives you a sense of the character of existing buildings in the neighborhood, primarily masonry. We also have precast concrete in the parking deck in the lower right hand image for Craig. You can see everything from the academic buildings to the residence halls to the utility plants, again, all using brick masonry. This is an aerial view from the southwest. As it says, you can see the addition to the Business School, Bell Hall. To the left hand side of your screen, you can see the existing Manning Plant Utility Plant, excuse me, to the right side. And you can see the parking deck at the bottom of the screen. The chilled water plant, of course, being right in the middle.
Can you talk about the changes that were made to accommodate the concerns that the Business School had regarding the chiller?
So it's a little bit difficult to see from this particular image. We'll get to the next one. You can see that the exterior wall is quite large. On here, we're looking at the south side. You can also see a number of trees that have been ghosted to allow you to see the true form of the building, but it's our belief that the trees would further screen the views. The parapet wall or the exterior wall has been extended to provide a fairly generous parapet, which is intended to screen the majority of the equipment on the roof. There are views from the further north up life, not directly from the Business School itself. We will see the equipment that you see in the image to the to the left. All of all of the equipment is shown to scale in this drawing, so you can see that, again, the majority of the equipment is screened from view. It's another image from a pedestrian level. You can see the entrance to the Business School to the left. And you can also see the the, excuse me, the plant to the right. One thing that has not been depicted in these illustrations that we are exploring are opportunities to increase the penetrations and the amount of glazing on the building to reduce the impact of the the large opaque surfaces on the facade itself. Again, the vegetation has been ghosted from this image, so it's that was really done to be candid, to to allow you to see the the building in its entirety. And this this is the last image, but I'm happy to address any any questions or.
And this is the Odom Village former sites are right now. It's a bunch of decrepit two story former graduate student housing buildings. And it's my understanding that the remaining Odom Village will also be demolished as well.
Correct.
So that will clean up that that section.
So the first phase, so we've designed the demolition of all but three of the Odom Village buildings. There's one that's currently being used for the Veterans Affairs Center. There's another building that's being used by the contractor for Bell Hall, and there's another one that's used by Public Safety. Those buildings will remain at this time because they're in active use, but the hope is to be able to remain to demo the remainder of the buildings.
There any questions? Yes. Trustee Makins?
It's in the same neighborhood, I'll say at this point.
No, this one's kind of an island. Actually, Ralph, it's maybe three acres, two and a half, three acres.
This this will probably give you a little sense. The the Odom Village buildings continue diagonally off to the lower left. You can see a good portion of them there. I don't know if I have a better image.
That's great. I appreciate it. Thank you.
No problem.
Yeah. Trustee Blaine?
Make a motion to approve.
Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion or debate? All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
Excellent. Thank you.
Next item of business is to consider a disposition by easement request to grant an easement to the Orange Water and Sewer Authority. Social advice chancellor for real estate and campus enterprise secretary, Merklin, is here to present the item. We have already received a presentation on this item once before, so unless there are any questions, I'll entertain a motion to approve. Is there a second? Second, by trustee White? All those in or any discussion or debate? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Our next two items are going to be presented by Mr. Knopfman. They are information only items. One is a review of the annual comprehensive financial report, and the other is a budget update.
Thank you, trustee Cottis. Good afternoon. As trustee Cottis mentioned, each year, we we come before this board to present on the annual financial report results. Auditor or our our internal audit, Dean Weber mentioned that earlier. We're really, when we think about the the annual financial report and our budget, those are really two different ways to think about how we how we monitor finance at the university. So we're going to talk about that, go over the audit summary, and then we'll get into some of the the financial information in the budget. So first, thinking about both a budget and an annual financial report. A budget, it's really forward looking. It's all operating funds, and you all are familiar at this point. This is the fourth year. We've gone down this process with the all funds budget process on on campus. Cash basis, and really, it's really a fiscal plan for the year. You think about the annual financial report, it's really backward looking, almost like a report card on how we've done with our spend. Again, all all funds in an accrual basis, and and because it uses a, it allows you to benchmark with peers, which is also very useful. In terms of the the audit summary itself, a clean and unqualified opinion. We're very proud of that work. I'd like to recognize our team who do put a lot of energy and effort into that. Beth McAndrew, Manali Bettendorf, Carly Perrin, all those, all of our finance folks spend a great deal of time putting together this report each year. Again, I also compliment the state auditor, and that staff worked well together to get to this point. No issues, and correct. That that might be more difficult to generate that praise in in future years. The, uh, and then of course, the, the, I must note the award as well. The team received that, that award from GFOA. So, you know, some highlights from the, from the net position and overall, we think very positive. Added $523 million to the net position, the university. Revenues are up 5.9% or 163 million, really driven by activity in three areas, but the biggest being contracts and grants. So again, that research enterprise moving forward and how it shows up on our balance sheet, you can see there. On expenses, they're up 16% or 567 million. A lot of that in supplies and services. One thing to note there, a, a big, a big driver there is benefits. And the, the OPEB or post-employment benefits is, is really, it's a calculation done at the state level. And then the amount of liability at our institution is apportioned from the state. It is not under our control. So that's something that is, is given to us and it's really disproportionately impacts that number. When you control for that, I think you find that our expenses and revenue are much more in line, especially on the, the salary side as well. I do want to draw your attention to the state appropriations. I think we had a conversation about this earlier today. How much has appropriation gone up over the last year? It's gone up 80, 86.8 million dollars, over 14%. That's incredible. We're at over $700 million coming in from the legislature. That's just operating funds. There is also a lot of support that comes in the form of R and R and capital. So again, combined, very generous level of support from the state, and it allows us to, to really meet those affordability goals and, and what makes us UNC. And then lastly, I'll just mention the investment income, a big year, up 12. You, you all know about the, how we performed last year in the endowment, up 12 and a half percent. That was compared to the year prior where we were down a little bit, so that delta ends up being a bigger dollar amount. And that's how it flows through our, our income statement or balance sheet. I did want to note, just, a lot of times we just do this bullets. I tend to think it's more helpful to see trend in some of the metrics. And I, and I'm presenting one here. I'd like to get to a point where we're doing a little bit more of this each year on this and showing our comparison even to, to peers. We're looking at one metric though, and the, the reason being, this is considered the single best metric to measure fiscal health and, and at a university. And so it's the composite financial index. It's really a, a composite of four different ratios. It's, you know, do you have resources sufficient to meet your, your needs, your debt managed, looking at your assets performance? And then, and then really living within your means. You can see the upward trend. You can also see, you know, three is considered to be really very strong. We're up north of eight at this point, continued improvement. And if you went back 10 years before that, it'd actually be even lower than what that slide shows. So again, I think we're really proud of the work and where we're at financially at the institution. So I want to shift gears over to budget. That's the other way we think about our, our, our fiscal health. Here's the schedule. We're really, this, think of this meeting really as a way of, of just a foundation as we move into March. We'll be coming back to you in March asking for approval of, of a budget recommendations. In terms of status, we have all materials submitted from all units on campus. It totaled $114 million of requests. That's inflated by about $50 million of capital or facilities related stuff. If you pull that out, you're really the $65 million range. That's actually less than what we've, what we've received the last couple of years. We're starting to get some alignment in terms of the, the size of the requests and the dollars or availability that we have to work with in terms of resources. So I think that's, that's working well. As typical, it's, it's consolidated into really, you know, a couple, four units comprise most of that. We, we've, we will wrap up, we've completed almost all of our budget meetings. I think we have two remaining. We should, we are, our, our schedule would dictate that we would have recommendations, really try to have those ironed out in the next month. Also want to be able to have some time with this board to engage on topics that I know are of interest and to go deeper on those before we get to March. So that this, this body feels comfortable with the recommendations we're making. The themes won't surprise you, so what the requests are looking like center around, again, I mentioned the facilities, but enrollment growth. You heard the, you heard the chancellor's reference to our, our goal and our priority there. And of course, there's associated resource needs associated with that, inflation, AI, security and accessibility. So, uh, I'm going to, I'm going to just quickly highlight just, there's a couple of things new this year. I'm, I'm going to go really to more of the, the metrics. We're talking a lot about metrics in, in our, in having to integrate that into our budget process. And, and then the other, other piece, in the other point of emphasis, I think is more on efficiency. And we want to make sure that we're highlighting the efforts we make at the campus in terms of making sure we realign resources towards our highest priorities. So I won't spend a lot of time on this. I think the chancellor already covered this. What, I think what I want to emphasize is this alignment. I hear, the chancellor laid out priorities and in those areas. I've, we've heard from this board, topics and interest in areas. You see our fiscal process and what we are highlighting as guiding our process. I see alignment in all of those coming together. These, the dollars and the process we have to fund should reflect those top priorities, and I think you see it on that sheet. In terms of, uh, again, kind of reviewing where we're at and how we're thinking about this, you know, our planning assumptions for how we're approaching this budget process. We think state reserves are really, we're going to be focused on the western part of the state, you know, recurring funds are going to be very limited. We are not expecting a big LSI or a, a big salary increase this year. We do have some central funding available. It is for, for request, but it is limited. We went through a allocation model on campus this last year. We talked about that as part of the budget process last year. That's the primary way. We, we now allocate tuition and appropriation based on student credit hours in academic units. That's the primary where academic units are funded. And then, you know, we talked to someone about the, the metrics and trying to shift more away from just what is to more performance. And we're still kind of on that evolution. And I talked about the efficiency piece as well. The last, the last thing I'd note is just, again, you know, our expectations for this year and how we're thinking about things. Again, central funds, we do have some availability. It's limited. That's, that's mainly driven by tuition appropriation, some F and A money going up, just reflecting our research enterprise growing. And then, uh, again, I think when we think about F and A, one thing to note again, it's just, we're funding that, that translational research building largely with that increase, right? There's a, a big portion of that, that F and A increase either centrally or in individual academic units really driving that. And we're really proud to be able to move that forward. That, that project's been talked about for a long time on this campus. And so, um, excited about that. With that, happy to take any questions.
And for those of you that have specific questions, we're, we're going to have time between now and March for a follow-up. So if you have specific budget questions you'd like investigated further, Vice Chancellor Knopfman and I are going to plan to meet and go through open items like that. So just make your list, shoot it over, shoot it over relatively quickly. But any current questions for Vice Chancellor Knopfman? Yeah. Okay. Thank you. Uh, one thing I did want to mention is all of the actions that the committee has approved will be placed on the full board consent agenda for vote by the full board tomorrow morning. So that concludes our business for today. Without objection, we'll stand adjourned.